There it is, it's recording.
Well, there's something wrong with this.
Must be the recorder.
Okay. Meeting for the Rules Committee will come to order. Anybody here for public speak? Would the Secretary please note the attendance of two esteemed colleagues of the Council, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Counselor Kuzinski.
Do I have to spell Kuzinski correctly?
Uh, no, I never do.
It takes about five years.
Consider it done.
Just Counselor JP.
Don't delay them.
I always do. GP Director Joe P. Public speak, we don't have any. Uh, so we'll just get right into the agenda.
I gotta write four letters to his name.
Mayor Rick Cadger, could you please, and these look like obvious, efficient administrative code changes. You can go ahead.
And, yes.
And I'd like you to speak to them, but before you do that, I wanted everybody to know the Charter, uh, paragraph that deals with these. These have to be public hearings, we have to note a public hearing according to the Charter. So, I will announce a public hearing for these code changes that will happen in June. And that we have to do it now, or they become, if we don't take action within 60 days, they just happen. It's like an appointment, the mayor's request doesn't happen. So, we will need to take action if we choose to by that June meeting. Okay, so Mayor Cadger, thank you. Embolishment of the Industrial Development Finance Authority.
Okay, so, um, this all, this all came to, uh, came into effect with the Economic Development Commission. What we usually have is technically five members of the finance and then 10 of development for a total of 15. So, uh, we're looking, and all that, what happened is, um, we are re-energizing the Development Authority, they haven't had, uh, they haven't had enough members and have been kind of inactive for a bit. So, over the last year, they're, they're getting very, you know, a lot of excitement and getting very active and getting new members, as, as you know. And, um, it came into effect that it would be helpful for them, instead of having that total of 15, to get a quorum if they could have a total of 10 on the EDIC. So, um, that was the request from the Chair and, um, and from the committee. So, looking at it, uh, I had to pull out all the information we had on the finance authority. And looking at that, that was something that was said way back when, you know, when you had all the, uh, all the, all the mills, industrial. And it's quite, um, quite a different type of committee. Uh, and there's only been one person on it for a long time, so they haven't had a quorum, it's just been Tom Brown. So, one out of five, so it's been pretty defunct for a while. And looking at it, it isn't anything that suits the city's needs anymore. It's not warranted or needed. And, um, so, we had looked at, how would we go about abolishing it? So, I contacted, you know, it didn't look like a simple thing after we started digging to see, because it was, it was formally incorporated. Um, so, and it's funny, because when you look at the Industrial Finance Commission, they have a lot of, uh, they have complete bonding authority, borrowing authority, don't need city council action, don't need the treasurer, don't need anybody. It was made for, you know, when the mills were enacted, if they needed to borrow, they just borrowed. So, we certainly don't do a, we don't, we certainly don't think, do things that way anymore, um, as you well know. So, uh, looking at it, uh, so Mr. Brown decided to resign, so there would be nobody on the commission, and he wants to be on the EDIC, because they kind of were always together, but it was the ten and five. So, uh, I ran all this by our city attorney, Jack Fitzgibbon, and, um, that's all the information that he provided us was, first of all, what you would want to do is administrative code to get rid of the finance, uh, the finance authority and an administrative code to change, it was not a matter of me just saying, "Okay, fine," or the members just voting, "Okay, fine." We're not 15 members anymore on EDIC, we're 10. It needed, it needs to be, you know, a formal thing where administrative code represented in the council process.
These are, these are city committees, they have to be done this way, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's why we're here.
So, they're both 15-1 and 15-2 are linked in that.
Yeah, exactly.
Restructuring the EDIC to 10 members eliminates the five members that were on the finance committee.
Right, and there wasn't anybody on it, but yes, it'll, actually, it eliminates the finance committee altogether, which will not, no longer be a committee. Industrial Finance Authority will no longer exist.
And just to review, you saying that the finance committee no longer has, uh, is not needed in the city anymore.
That's correct.
They don't have jurisdiction over big mills and things, whatever they used to do, because they don't exist.
Right, and they've been defunct for a long, long time. They haven't had a quorum in many, many years. Nor do they, nor do they want, you know, they want a member, does not want to be, the one member does not want to be on the finance authority. They all agree, it's not needed, um, it's not the way we do things, and so, you know, how do we go about getting rid of it? So, this is why we're here.
Sure.
Are there any minutes from any of the finance meetings where they haven't met in years?
They can't meet, there's only one person on there.
But they haven't.
And when, how many years?
When was the last time they met?
The, oh, years?
Okay.
Years?
But is there like a record of it? Have they been?
Uh, any minutes would be kept in the city clerk's office, so you could double-check with, uh, the city clerk, and she would tell you, but it's been many, many years since they've met, because they haven't had a quorum in many, many years.
They're, they sounded like they had some jurisdictional authority.
They had a huge authority to borrow money without asking anybody, which is very, I, when I started looking at it, I was like, "Wow!"
What do you have, is that the?
No, this is, uh, Jack's opinion on, you know, on the, on exactly what I did.
How did you go about doing this?
Exactly, on the administrative.
Just his opinion on how to.
So, where did we get the information on how this board was initially set up, like?
Uh, how, you could go searching through all the records that Barbara did, I mean, that Barbara has. What I did is I provided everything I had to Jack, so that he could research it, and...
Like, where were you able to find that they had borrowing ability? Is it in the city charter?
It's the state charter?
No. Well, how do you know that they have borrowing authority?
Uh, okay, let me just see what I can show you.
While she's looking, let me say this.
Yeah, these are.
I do not want a non-elected committee to have borrowing authority in our city.
Exactly.
I just don't feel comfortable with that, so I'm kind of happy we're getting rid of this committee.
Well, whenever I saw it, I can tell you.
Personally, I just don't think that's shocking.
My eyes were no, no way.
That comes from, that comes from the original Charter from town meeting, and we never updated.
Yeah. Well, this comes from, yeah, exactly.
When we had town meeting, and we never updated their authority when we came city, that's what I think, right?
Joe, wouldn't you say?
Right.
I think that's what it sounds like.
I just want to see where it starts about their authority.
Every authority you have has got transferred.
It was pretty scary when we dug it up.
If we don't tell them that they have a separate, if their authority has changed, they maintain it.
They maintain it, yes.
Because in, in the Charter, Transition, uh, Chapter in Transitions, it says that. Unless otherwise stated, committees maintain their authority.
Okay, here it is, it's under 40D, um, Industrial Development for Cities and Towns.
Is that 40D, MGL?
40D, uh, Section 7, MGL, National Law, Chapter 40D, Section 7. Let me just see if I can find one little section of it that talks about it. First of all, to make contracts of every name and nature and to execute all instruments necessary or convenient for carrying out its business, to construct and improve, maintain and repair industrial development pollution control, uh, to issue bonds without limitation of the foregoing, to borrow money and accept grants from any, and to enter into contracts, leases, or other transaction with the Commonwealth or its agency, any federal agency, any municipality, bank, or other financial institution, corporation, or other authority organized under this chapter, uh, to pledge, hypothecate, or otherwise encumber all or any of the revenues or receipts of property or interest of property of the authority as security for bonds or... It's a lot of stuff.
Could you do me a favor and kind of highlight that and copy it for all the counselors?
I'll just, I'll just give you a copy of this.
Because that's important information.
I'll put one in each one of your boxes.
It concerns me that that authority exists. Thank God the committee doesn't exist in a sense.
Right. Well, that's what happened to me, so.
My question would be, they're acting on behalf of the city or on behalf of?
Themselves.
Theirselves.
The industrial authority.
Not the city, the committee.
So, but who's on, who's on, if they don't pay a debt?
Nobody, nobody's on the committee.
Somebody would have to fund the bond.
I was gonna say, who pays the bond debt?
Well, yeah, it's our money, it's, I mean, the city's money.
It's the city's money.
But what I mean is, I mean, we're gonna, you're gonna have something in front of you, bonding and borrowing anyway. So, that's the, the treasurer asks to bond, I approve it, send it to you.
Oh, in other words, they ask for a bond and treasurer?
But this, this is none of that.
Oh, really?
This is, they, they have the authority, yes.
I don't even want to.
Yeah.
I wonder where the last one's.
Jan, Mark, you have something else to say before you ask?
Very interesting stuff.
Does the committee have money right now?
There is no committee, no, they don't have any money.
No, they have no money in a bank.
There's no budget, there's no money. This is not about a budget or money, this is about them having authority to borrow.
It's just a question here.
No, this is about them having a...
So, if they have borrowing ability, it's just wondering if they have a bank account already?
No, no.
It's not that as well.
There are no such thing as bank accounts, they would have a budget, or like a fund, or like, actually, they would have debt.
That's what I'm wondering.
But no, there's nothing on the...
Are they responsible for anything right now?
No.
Does anyone know what they've done over the whole history of their organization?
They haven't.
If this was organized back in the 1900, early 1900s, were they responsible for setting up streets and mills and, I don't know, what, what did they do?
You could research before we were a city, but since we were a city, they definitely have not exercised any of their powers or duties.
I wonder what other communities have done with this type of a board, if they exist, I'm just curious.
Well...
You know, are we missing an opportunity that some other community has taken advantage of? Apparently, no one who's been on the board is thinking that way.
I, I have a serious problem. I don't see an advantage to having some non-elected board be able to bond and then we're on the, we're responsible for paying that bond back. I don't know what the law is, but since it hasn't been used in the 20 years that this city's been in existence, I see no reason to personally go into finding out what it can do for us, because I don't want it to do anything for us. I think that bonding authority should be maintained in our city.
Just for, for, for arguments, as an example, the mill that's on Ferry Street isn't doing any, that if there were public funds, if something could be done, we need an organization like that to do it.
Planner, planner does that, right? Doesn't the planner do that now?
I'm saying to... I, I'm sorry, did you ask me a question?
No, there's no question. Uh, uh, okay.
I wouldn't want to abolish a, a group that might come into play, and if it's in the play elsewhere in the state, someone should tell us.
All right, well, okay. Joe, do you have a comment?
Well, yeah, I'm just, I just kind of feel, I am, and you too, I think, I'm extremely illiterate of anyone having financial authority besides the mayor. I think things have changed.
Mayor and the city council.
Mayor, right, the council. So, I mean, uh, you know, I, I could see maybe if you had some group that could work, but I still think they need to act financially through the regular route, so you don't get two chiefs.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, I agree with you on that. That's why I asked if it's, if it's on behalf of the commission or on behalf of the municipality.
Well, given that the city has...
If it's an industrial commission, for example, the industrial park in North Hampton, if that was set up by an industrial commission, they bonded the project, put in a road, put in utilities, and now they could have, bring industry to the community. That would, I, I think, be a good public purpose. If there was any land left in our city that maybe could still be developed, I'm sure that there is much, I would like to see whatever authority there was.
Okay, well...
Be available for us. So, I'm just a little asking questions.
I mean, like, if it was, if it was a truly independent budget, and they were in charge of their own budget, borrowing or whatever.
Borrowing by the land, develop the road, okay.
But if they were budgeting, if they were borrowing.
Borrowing on behalf of the city, and I'm not sure that that's the case.
Well, okay. I don't know where to go with this, except to say that I will vote in favor of the administrative code change right now. Dan?
Just one, just to walk it back, and this is strictly for information, because I know you're always learning this job. We went through the whole Charter change, the tenure change. How do we, how do, it seemed like we couldn't make very many changes without having that formal thing. How does the mayor get to make changes?
Administrative code.
Because this is in the Charter.
Yeah, administrative code can be changed by the city council and the mayor within the Charter. There are things we can do.
But I'm not against this, I'm not...
No, I'm saying we can do that. This isn't a Charter change, it's an administrative code change. Administrative code sets up the organization of the city.
Right, but like...
For instance, when we changed the finance director from, and that position was created, I believe that was administrative code change, but...
But Joe said it, I think, I saw it at the end, this was carried over from the towns, it is like, uh, it's in our city Charter.
Administrative code, the Charter accepted committees, which were part of the administrative code, all of the committees, the planning committee, the zoning committee, all of these committees.
We've created committees.
They, they, those committees were created prior to the city's existence, so in transition, they continue to exist unless otherwise changed by the Charter or by administrative code. So, the Charter establishes administrative code precisely so that we can change organization without going through the state legislature. That process would take forever, and we might want to redo it.
Do we have information on how the EDIC is put together? Because, I mean, I got a call from Mary before this meeting, and just the whole setup of EDIC apparently is under suspicion. She, she got road blocked at City Hall all day today.
Road blocked?
Yeah. They're not keeping minutes, Jamie Webb's is saying they keep notes, but neither the planning department or the city clerk has a copy of notes. They're not keeping minutes because they don't have a quorum or something? They're not videotaping their meetings?
Well, number one.
Jamie Webb's told her that the open meeting law doesn't apply to the bodies that meet without a quorum.
Well, yeah.
But they're still meeting?
Well, they have no authority other than advisory authority, right?
We don't know what their authority is right now. I don't know what that means. She couldn't get a phone, she couldn't get a list of people that were currently on the board. She couldn't get a phone number. They're not on the website. They would not give her the chair's telephone number, so she could call the chair. It's impossible for the public to know what the committee is discussing, who its members are, and whether or not they are violating open meeting law. And, you know, she's not persuaded that simply reducing the commission's size will address this problem. You know, I know that...
Who says that?
This is Mary Seres, the reporter, today, trying...
Whether she thinks reducing the size will improve their, I think reducing the size will or will't, and frankly, don't care what my, her opinion is, it's our opinion that counts.
Right.
But I, I agree with you, we need...
The board right now is not following, does not seem to be following Robert's Rules of Order, open meeting law.
Well, I don't know, I don't know anything about it.
So, I'm hesitant to make any changes to it without figuring out what's going on.
Okay, just so you know, if you don't make the change, it just happens. We have to vote no or, and right now, I'm not there to do that, but I can get more information. I think, given that, we have another meeting coming in here in 10 minutes, and I thought this wasn't...
I'd like to give you that.
So...
I'm friendly with the town, I don't blame you.
Mayor Cadger?
Yes.
We're gonna have to call another meeting.
Sure.
We need some more information on, I'll allow, JP, if you want to look up the Industrial Finance Authority and what they want to do, I see no reason to not support that, but we're not gonna vote on this today.
Okay.
But the 15-2 restructuring EDIC, Counselor Hayes brings up a good point, there is some concern about how they're organized and what the authority they have, whether they need to follow Robert's Rules of Order, whether they have to follow open meeting law, et cetera. This is reporters questioning that, and we don't know how to answer it. So, I'm wondering if you can provide that information before the next time we meet.
Okay, what, uh, what I can provide you with, and, you know, this would probably help too, I gave you a copy of the chapter and section, and...
Of, for the Industrial Finance Committee?
Yeah, for 40, yes, the 40D that I was talking about earlier, that is the section that governs them. And I'm gonna give you a copy of this too, from Jack, and this talks about both. Number two is about the, the industrial finance, and it just says, because it'll help you a little bit. It says, "This agency was established by vote at town meeting," which you already knew, "in, on March 25th, 1972. Such authorities are established pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 40D," which I just gave you, "in particular, Section 2 and 3. According, the authority shall be governed by a five board of directors," which is already, what you already know. And then it just says, um, it provides that, "Whenever the authority determines that there is no further need for its existence and has no property left to administer, it may, by majority of a vote, submit questions of dissolution to the mayor and the city council."
That's the Industrial Development Finance Authority?
Yes, yes.
Right, we're talking, that's not what we're talking about.
Now, we're talking about the EDIC itself.
Okay.
So, we need more information on their...
The EDIC, I'll give you, like I said, I'll give you a copy of that one. That's number one. Was established at town meeting, March 25th, 1956, when the town voted to accept the provisions.
So, we actually, if you're gonna give us a copy of that, that would be great.
Yeah, I definitely will put it in your box.
But the specific questions are, are they under Robert's Rules of Order, keeping minutes, videotaped meetings, open meeting laws?
I can answer some of that.
I can answer that, I go ahead with meetings.
Because I called all those, I called the, because this had come up before, and videotaping, we found out, is only, we only pass for city council and city council subcommittees, which are the only ones we recommend.
They recommend everybody, but for instance, the Board of Public Health doesn't videotape, there are other committees, so there is no rule that says that. As far as open meeting laws go, I talked to the people from open meeting law people, if you don't have a quorum, it's not a violation of open meeting laws. It's suggested, other communities such as North Hampton have in their bylaws that if, if you don't have a quorum, you dissolve, you, you...
Don't meet.
You don't, you don't sit and talk even if you have a quorum.
We don't have that.
But they haven't, so there has been technically no violations of open meeting laws because they haven't had a quorum.
And, right, exactly. And they do, they have been, anytime they meet, they do an audio, and now they do the whole thing.
They do the video?
Yes, they do now. They did at the last, because I go to every one of their meetings, so I can...
But there's no minutes taken at their meetings?
Uh, I believe there is.
No.
There should be.
They're called notes.
Oh, I, maybe they're referring to them different, but they do...
But they were unavailable at the planning department, or the city clerk had no note?
Well, I don't think they would be at the planning department anyway, but...
Well, that was, you know, checked votes.
Where are they supposed to?
Where are they supposed to be?
Um, I think, well, when they're minutes, because they have a quorum, it would be the city clerk's office and their department, but I do know that, I do know that they do take notes.
As I say, that's a good point, like, if you don't have a quorum, they're not probably on minutes.
Right, right.
Right, exactly. No, and they're called notes, so where would you go to get those?
And maybe those are unhappy about.
From the person on the board that takes those.
But those notes don't have to be publicly filed, because a meeting did not exist if it was not a quorum, because they have no authority once they have a...
So, then that goes to the question of who's on the board and what constitutes a quorum.
Well, this is the reason...
That's why they don't have a quorum and why we're back.
There's not a list of people that are on this board, and there's also no contact.
Oh, there is a list of people that are on the board. It's, there is a list, there's a list of every board and committee, and it's on Barbara's...
It's not on the website.
It's on Barbara's access program. Barbara has a list that she provides to me, which I'd be happy to give to you, of every board and committee.
Barbara Labamba?
Yes. Every board and committee has a list, and I can tell you exactly the members that are on.
All right, fine, it's out.
Okay, so...
What I need is that information that you gave her, Jack, we'll get the information on who's on the committee, but obviously...
Put a copy in your box too, who's on the committee.
Right, but obviously, the reason they haven't had quorums is because they have a 15-member committee.
Correct.
Going to 10 members means they only need six for a quorum. And I can see why this, this change has two facets of it. One, the Industrial Finance Authority is being eliminated, which was part of that committee.
Right.
So, that was like a subcommittee of the other one, am I correct?
That's right, perfect.
So, that's why there's 15 members on it.
Perfect.
So, if we eliminate the finance authority, which I'm in favor of, that takes five members away, then we have to establish the EDIC as 10 members anyway. But by establishing that, now they'll have a quorum. Currently, how many members?
Nine.
Just numbers, there's nine on it. But it would require them to have, if my math is correct, eight for a quorum. Am I correct? If there's 15 members?
Well, before, yes, 15.
So, I could see why they were having trouble.
Yeah.
Because these are all volunteers, they're just gonna come when they can. So, I'm in favor of these two things, but it sounds like Counselor Hayes wants more information before we vote on it.
What is, I'd like to see exactly what the EDIC does, like, what is their goal? And do we have that, do we have that written down?
I know they talked about mission statement, I don't think they ever came up one with one or no.
Yeah. Tracking down the mission statement of boards and committees that have been in effect for a long time is probably not the, probably not the easiest thing to do, but I'd be happy to, like I said, I'll give you a copy of...
Well, the only thing we can...
Well, you're excited about having all these people on the board, what are their goals?
Oh, their goals are to promote business in town, that is what their goal is now.
So, it's like a chamber of commerce?
No. Uh, it's like a bit, like, economic development, how you would put development and, you know, what type of, you know, getting businesses in here, being proactive, I mean, right now, all they're doing is they clean up, they clean up it.
More strategy, maybe, any more strategy?
Yeah, so, they're excited about getting going, and, and, oh, one of the things that they would have really, really have liked to have, if they had a quorum, they would have liked to have been providing input other than individual to the joint committees for the big, you know, the, um, the building limitations on highway business. So, they weren't able to have a quorum to, to give, you know, something from a committee, so they would, they came individually to talk on that.
So, it's basically advisory committee.
Yes, and they want to be, you know, they want to be part of, you know, you know, get some energy going, just like with the arts and cultural, how we've, you know, been able to get so many...
I think what will help the council, and I'll call another meeting to discuss this, what will help the council is kind of putting together, I don't know if I could put this on your shoulders, Karen, but a mission statement of what you hope they will do for the city and the business community. What advice they would be giving, and the current membership, okay?
That's easy.
The current membership, plus what do you see them doing? And then my first statement to them is develop a mission statement, so that...
Oh, absolutely.
This doesn't have to happen again.
So, we've made a request for a mission statement.
Well, that's what they want to do. They don't have one yet.
I know, but I'm saying, this is your idea to do this, and you, as a mayor, have a goal for them. Maybe if you just wrote something up, that'll help us. I mean, I'm, I don't need to be convinced, but obviously there are reasons to have it.
Well, I think, I think the thing is, they already exist, they're just looking to, to change the number of their members so that they can exist and have a quorum.
Obviously.
So that they can exist and have, you know, a, a meeting.
Right.
And minutes, and, and, of a meeting, you know what I mean, all of that. So that's what this is all about.
Here's, here's what I'm...
They already exist, they just don't have their quorum.
I agree. I agree totally. Here's what I'm going to propose to the, the consuls on the committee. I would like to set a public hearing for these three changes for the June meeting, because we have to do that if we're going to make the changes. And then call another meeting to finalize our thoughts on it and make a recommendation for the full council before the next meeting, sometime before the June meeting. The reason for that is because, wait, it's 6 o'clock and I, I have to conclude this meeting. I can't go over. I didn't know we need more time, I should have called this.
Counselor, just for your information, you may want to check with Barbara, because I was checking on the number of public hearings. I thought she said that they're set for this coming meeting, and this issue, so it may be a case that they're already set and they just like to continue on.
Yeah.
No, 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 not, not May, May 22nd, it has to be June.
No, I think, what I'm trying to say is, I think she was telling me today they were already set for the next meeting.
I can't add to them?
No, no, yours, your three things are already on the...
Oh, he did it already. You did.
You did.
Did I do that?
That's what she told me today, that...
I already did that?
Because I was trying to set up how many public hearings for finance matters would be on the first meeting in June, and I mentioned...
I don't remember making a motion to that effect.
I mentioned your three items, and you said Dan's, Dan's...
I did.
Dan's items are set.
This early onset, or late onset Alzheimer's? Are you serious? I made them?
That's what she told me today.
Well, your package should be...
All right, well, fine, we'll find out.
Hey, good, here's a packet.
Yeah, I was going to say, your package is already... So what I'll do, though, is I'll...
They're already on, guys.
But no matter what, I'll give you a copy of the information from Jack on both committees and a list of the members on EDIC.
And any of your thoughts of what you hope they would do for us?
If there are anything that they've done, I mean, what does this board do?
Well, what they've been doing over the last few months is discussing the, the building size, zoning regulation.
Well, let me just conclude by saying, I know Tommy Brown's been on it for a long time.
Yes.
Talk to him and tell us, what have you guys done over the years? Just so the council get a sense of what your mission statement might be, if you had to put one together. Now, the Fair Housing Committee, with the Housing Partnership Committee, that seems simple, but we can't discuss it tonight, so we'll do it at the next meeting. Guys, is it okay with you if we do 5:10? You usually have an appointments meeting, though, before your council meeting.
I can't meet earlier than that.
On the council meeting, on the, on the June?
I'm working at 6:00.
Right, yeah, we have 14 appointments, so we, I think we even started, we're even starting.
Not this meeting, not this week. I'm talking June.
June?
Oh, June.
Probably. June, that's like a lifetime of...
Yeah. I can't, can't deal with it, I have to conclude, because I didn't leave us enough more time. I'm on the finance committee, so I can't...
Well, it'll be on, the next agenda will hold a lot more time.
I did not conclude, it just was...
That's yours. I gave it to...
Councilor Hayes has a great question, but I didn't...
Yep, I made one for everybody, but I'll put it given for the rest of the conference.
All right, we have to adjourn, the Rules Committee meeting?
Let's adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Those will be in your box tonight, by the way.
Are you going to leave this on?
Yeah, mine's a little on. The tape is running, gentlemen, just so you know.
I have to move?
Yes, I knew the gentleman, somebody's a gentleman.
He's the chair now.
I never get called gentleman.
Bruce!
How we doing?
All right.
I like the, uh...
Do you like it? I'm trying to add some class to my, to the word "ass," so I have class.
It's always exciting.
I was going to say, I was going to say, gee, Chief Alberti, you don't look the same. He's always here. Alberti's always here.
I'm giving him practice, is what it is.
Well, he's a good guy, you've got a good assistant. Is he assistant chief now, or is this the captain?
He's the captain.
You don't have a deputy chief, right? But you have the ability to designate someone, like if you're on vacation, or someone who's your chief, like...
Good experience. Good money guy.
Absolutely.
I'd like to open the City Council Finance Subcommittee meeting on May 14th.
Can I say no?
You can say no if you want, Dan. I'll give you a time, Dan, to scan the room and pick out all the dignitaries that are here tonight. There was one item that I put on the agenda before we get into the budget. Well, let's, we can do the minutes. Did you get the minutes, JP, from that Dan sent?
I sent them yesterday.
But I don't, I don't know if you're going to abstain. You're going to abstain anyway. Anyway, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from April 22nd, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the prior meeting of 4/22. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Mayor's communication, anything you want to say before we get going?
I think you have enough.
Okay. Thank you.
A public speak, anyone here for the public that wants to say anything before we get going?
You want mine?
Okay, no public speak. One item that we've had continued, and I, I don't want to take only a couple of minutes on it, but it's been kind of ongoing, we've had it on our agenda since February, is the net and non-net spending, and I did put that on the agenda. And I just wanted to let you know, I, and I, I spoke to the auditor and got her opinion, which she is totally for it. I also got a letter from the chairperson of the East Hampton School Committee, which I'll give the members of, and they are opposed. So again, when this was first brought up, my personal thing was, and we did vote, and I certainly don't mind sticking with that vote, was that I was supportive of it, because I thought it was just a, a tool in the financial toolbox of the city in case of things. But in light, I think there's a little more to it now of people's perceptions of, of school financing and that, so I mean, I'm going to bring it up for a vote at the next meeting, and, and while I will say what our, you know, what our original vote was, I think I will free everyone to, to certainly express their opinion. You know, I may even, again, I'm a little more neutral now on it, and kind of will be over the next week, kind of weighing all the different options myself. Because I, again, I think there's pros and cons of both, and, and, and for risk, yeah, well.
Well, I did also talk to the auditor, and the clarity that she gave me that I liked was their concern, the school department's concern, that this net spending increase would be some avenue for a future mayor to reduce the percentage of our budget that goes to schools. But that could happen whether we have net or non-net spending, because net and non-net spending combines to create that percentage. So if it's 63% of city monies goes to schools, non-net and net spending is included in that percentage. So whether we keep it in net, non-net, or we move it to net spending, that percentage could change by a future administration, whether or not we make this change or not. By, by saying we're that much further above the net spending round that the state establishes, to me, I still feel is a perception that helps us with choice, that we are spending more money on our students than we have to. So I think it's, it's, it's an outside community that want to send their kids here, it's a good thing. So I'm still there for it, but that clarity that it's about the percentage. So if Mayor Kadrick can say, I will never change that percentage, probably going up, but from, from a future administration, this change, to me, doesn't, if we don't do it, that doesn't mean they won't reduce it if they want to. They could still reduce the amount of money we spend on schools.
Oh, absolutely.
And whether we put it in there or not. But what this prevents is a fine that might come our way, because we somehow get so low that we're at a new, they may create a new ground for net spending. So I'm okay with it, because I don't want us to hit that barrier, and this is for the future.
Right, but unless I'm, I'm, the mayor's, at least the last two mayors, we only had to, have always set that, kind of that percentage, but I don't believe they're locked into that even this year, if Mayor Kadrick had not wanted to do the 60-some-odd percent. She could have, you know, reduced it 800,000 less this year.
My point, my point is, whether we make this change or not, doesn't...
No, it's going to be...
It might make them, what they're saying is easier for a future mayor to do it.
Yes, because, so anyway, again, just leaving you guys open, or everybody open, and the other consuls that are here, that I will put it on the agenda and, and we'll debate it. But again, you know, we did approve it here in finance, but I'm just saying, at least in my own, I've come to the conclusion that I'm not 100% sure of how I am going to vote. So I could even, while I propose it to the council, I may, or may not, because I also got a long email, I know President McCoy and I, because Councilor Smith couldn't attend the last city council meeting, she had a lot of concerns. She wrote a several paragraph concern, but I know now she's hopefully going to be at the next meeting, and she could express those herself at, at the, at the hearing, so.
And was, there was no input from the mayor's office or the finance director on this?
No, no, the mayor's...
Lot of discussion on it, Ken.
No, no, the...
Lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, a lot of input. We provided, you know, every, every inch of it.
And do you have the decision either way?
The decision is the legislative body, the city councilors. We provided all the information on it, provided the information why it was presented to you, because if we didn't present it to you, then we would be making a decision for you, which is inappropriate. And so, you know, we've just been able to give you all the information. A lot of people didn't know the difference between that and non-net. So, you know, it's a confusing issue for a lot of people. You know, the school committee asked me questions the other night.
There was a lot of discussion.
We have a recommendation from the school board, and we're looking at this one.
Well, the auditor gave a verbal recommendation. Again, clarifying with the mayor, at least how I took the mayor, I, I took it as when, by presenting it to us, the administration said in favor, but I, I think, over that, Karen, it's clarified as saying it's more an option, and she's put in front of the council basically to make the decision one way or the other.
That's correct. That's correct. And I believe that, you know, some of the councilors have actually talked to your auditor to see, you know, where she stands on it.
Right, and she is definitely for it.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, we have a recommendation from the auditor, we have a recommendation from the school board chair. We don't have a recommendation from the finance department.
They voted on it.
Our committee voted in favor, as I said.
The subcommittee voted in favor.
Which, which I...
It just sounds like we should get as much input from the different committees.
And I'll, I'll lay it all out to the full council next week, so that all the consuls know what we've got from everyone, to be fair. JP?
I just wanted to say, I don't, I didn't see anything that changed my mind on the subject. I think that if it's a school expense, it should be counted toward the school.
I agree. No, you're putting this net and non-net within the...
It's something that, that is a retired teacher, so, okay, the teachers do their service, and this is an obligation of the city, it should be counted toward what we spend toward our schools. It's not like we're putting it in a different, I'm saying, taking something that isn't counted by four of us, but it is a expensive school, so it should be counted.
Well, I mean, we don't want to send the...
No, no, I agree with this week.
But my understanding, though, is that by doing that, theoretically, someone, they put X amount of money in, and now that they're taking the retirement health in, it may look like we're putting in X amount of money, but when you take the retirement, the net, I shouldn't say yet net, not net, but money going to the schools could technically, technically could be less, because you're now counting in a sum of money that goes to retirement. But I think that, again, this could go on forever, so we...
Right. It is a, you know, we'll, I'll, I'll kind of lay it out for all the consuls in detail, and we can kind of see how the vote goes. Anyway, let's move on to the budget. And I did promise the public safety officials here that we'd start with public safety, and I believe the police are first up. I did, I did, I did tell the fire chief that he didn't have to get right here at 6:00, so he, you know, he's, he wanted to hear your presentation, though. He's been, I think...
You're a tough act to follow, though.
He's taking notes.
I don't know, I don't know if it's better to go first or second, because, you know, it's like, you know...
Exactly. What's the wishes of the city?
If you have, want to give it like a, just an overview first, and then we'll kind of go through it, and as I said, if we could make, keep all our comments...
Absolutely.
Fairly brief, because we have a lot to do. This is going to be our busiest of the three nights, the longest of the three nights.
All right. The Police Department's budget for fiscal 2016 covers the personal services, also the expenses. We looked at the overall budget, and the way to determine what we're asking for is based on past year's needs. We look at the figures that we used. What we've been doing in the past three years is we've had more beat change to try to put people in appropriate places, like we're sending people to the academy. We staff the midnight shift a little bit heavier, because that's where we're spending our overtime. We've also looked at changing beans around, putting officers that are working two days, and then they go to two midnights. So we're trying to save and cut expenses as much as we could. We eliminated a court sergeant's position, put him on the midnight to 8:00 shift for more supervision, and we put a patrol officer in that position that reports to a sergeant that now oversees the court. So we're trying to cut any expense that we possibly can. We have review of all of our court dates when people go in, to see if they actually need the amount of people that are being requested, or if we can cut that back. As far as overtime, the sergeants have a great handle on what they're doing. They look at the overtime repeats every single day, and they determine what beat can be left filled, or needs to be filled, and what beat can be left open. Traditionally, with all of the vacation time that we have in this department, the comp time, you know, if there are times, we still go through about 800 vacation days a year, or actually more than that, where we leave close to 800 beats open also. So that's a day where someone should be filling a beat they're actually not. So I look at this budget and say, yeah, this, we've been going through this for the last eight years. Is it a budget that we can, we can live with? Absolutely. I think the Mayor and Finance Director have done a great job of putting the budget together. Is it what I would love to have in the department? No, I could always use a lot more money as a day for anybody else. But I know the financial situation of the city, and it's something that I look at and say, yeah, we, we'll make it work the absolute best we can. And as I've said, every year that I've been here before the Subcommittee, if something crazy happens, and we get some serious crimes, where we're filling a lot of overtime, we'll probably be back and see it. Or the one year that I did come back, and we had seven injuries, there were seven people out injured for months at a time, and we just ran out of people. So, you know, we'll make it work with the numbers that we have. And if you'd like, I could cover, you know, each line item, explain to council what they are, unless you have any specific questions.
Yeah, what I'd like to do for the council, councilors, is you go over to the police budget, and if you have any questions on a particular line item, you know, starting on the first page, are we all on the same...
I'd just like to ask a general question.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And I really, I think the details, they're fine for consuls if they want to ask them, but I, I don't intend to do so. You, if I understand what you said, Chief, your level funded, $2,404,000 last year, $2,404,000 recommended this year. So that level funding negates the fact that you have contracted raises and probably mandates where budgets are going to increase out of your control.
Correct.
So if I understand you correctly, the way you're, you're going to try and compensate for that is to start off with a less of an overtime budget and less beats, and hope you make it, and then obviously, if something happens and you need to have more overtime, you're going to ask the mayor for new funding, and that's how it'll have to be. You're going to wait and see what happens? Is that what I'm hearing?
Every single year that we do, it's always, it's always a wait and see. If we have a serious investigation, it's going to be, let's say, homicide investigation, it's going to take countless man-hours to, to solve that. That's well beyond our control. The overtime budget that I see in here, that, that's fulfilling your basic needs, people on, on vacation, on sick time, some injuries, but things that are, that are beyond our control are investigations, officers getting injured, then things like that, that we can't really plan for. What I put into the budget was some contingencies, my original request is contingencies to say, okay, if we have this, we can do this. But again, it's a level funded budget, and again, we, we make doing what we have, and we do our very best.
Yeah, I know you do. Okay. Sounds right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I could just, a couple of them as go through, then just ones I had, and then either council could. Under overtime training, you, you...
Okay, Jim.
Last year you had $35,000, you requested $56,000, the mayor gave you $42,000. I was just wondering what the difference was, what, what, is there extra training, or is it just you fell behind in training?
No, there's a lot more training now. In years past, this is the first year where we're actually mandated now to go to the academy for a minimum of two days per officer. So what's happening is, at one time, we were able to conduct all of our training in-house. We have roll call training, we have mandatory training in the department, but again, when somebody's coming in on training, it's on a day officer, it's on overtime. Now the academy is requiring, or the training council is requiring that officers go there for two days a week, their special hour, two days over the course of the year, and they've also bumped the hours. The, the people that are there going to in-service, now they're required to do a minimum, I believe is 48 hours, or before, you know, it was 40 hours, but two of those 48 hours have to be physically at the academy. Where before, we could get away and do a lot of that in-house, and we could do it at roll call training. We can't do that anymore.
And under computer services, you had, this is, it's, page 37. Computer services, you asked, or you had nine last year, you asked for 20, which is double almost, and the mayor gave you just a little increase. Was this some new computer stuff you wanted to?
New server, we're looking at a server for the department.[1558.16] What we did the last time is I was in with the person serving on the drug forfeiture monies and the monies, I don't know if you've been reading, but the monies out of the Department of Justice in drug forfeiture are being much, the controls are much, much tighter. Uh, I just spent the last 10 days.
You mean that'd be directly related to drug enforcement?
Yeah. I spent the last 10 days with the Department of Justice going over expenses that I knew that I could spend, but they were telling me that I couldn't. Well, we finally got a resolution and said, yes, you were correct, you can spend money on that, but to buy a second server and they would hook up that we already purchased a first server, they would say that that was incumbent on the community of the city to purchase that. And, uh, Barry was telling me, our, our computer man, that our server is going on, I believe it's six years old, but it could be five or six. Ten servers, lifespan is about five years, so we're, we're between rock and hard with something.
So, this money that you were granted isn't going to buy you a server?
Money on the drug forfeiture, no, it will not.
No, I'm talking about 2,000, 7,000.
Uh, the money, uh, I.
That's just not, that's covering regular expenses, not a new server.
That's covering regular expenses and I know that Barry had put money in his budget to cover a portion of that cost also, so it would be a split cost. Some of that money would be coming out of my budget, some of it would be coming out of Barry's. We didn't work out exactly what.
So, you may be able to get a new server.
They'll get a server out of that.
All right, good.
And then my last one on, on yours is auto supply, um, was 24,000 last year, you asked 28, the mayor gave you 15. I guess my question is, are you going to make it in auto supply or is that another one that we've?
We're walking a lot this year.
Buying bikes. A variety, a variety of things, uh, have, have happened. Uh, we are purchasing, uh, a semi-marked cruiser out of drug forfeiture money. So, that money will come out of drug forfeiture, uh, hopefully within the next couple of months. And then we were able to get one through council with appropriation, um, that's still on order. So, we'll be looking at two new vehicles which will replace one vehicle that has about 175,000 miles on it and, uh, the other vehicle would be a 10-year-old Expedition. So, we're going to be moving those to a lot. We're anticipating that, uh, with two new cars that, you know, we can make this work and hopefully we'll have a few less expenses on the, uh, cars. Sergeant Brian Ross does a great job in keeping the cars running, working with the, uh, motor repair at the BWD. They do a tremendous job and saving us a lot of money because we can bring them down there and they will, they will literally cop the car together and get it out there and running. So, uh, you know, we're doing the best that we can with, with what we have. And again, um, you know, I understand that money needed to get out of the budget and this is one place that, you know, we had several meetings, the three of us, uh, you know, we talked about these things and they were very good asking if we need to cut. Where do you feel more comfortable with taking money out of certain things? That was one of the things that we agreed that, okay, with a little bit newer fleet, even though we'd like to replace a couple more cars, we can, we can make it work because, you know, we do have, uh, 10 tires. When you're starting to come tires, you say, I have 10 tires in the garage that we were able to replace on these particular cars at certain times. That's going to get us this far. We'll take it from there.
Other counselors on line items?
I certainly appreciate all the making do that you're, you're doing right now on a level funded, level funded budget. Uh, in addition to the items that you pointed out, I had a question about one item, uh, and that's holidays pay.
Yep.
And that's where you recommended sick, we had, you know, 1361, 1459, and 1562, you requested 638 and you were granted 71. Were there more holiday, what happened?
No.
Did we create new holiday?
No, new contracts, uh, increase in, uh, the base salary and the other, the other portion of that is the captain's position, my position, where Deborah Grant holiday pays. That's something that was negotiated with the mayor to include the captain's position and my position.
Between the time you requested the budget and it was recommended by the mayor, is that?
We've been requesting holiday pay since I've been here.
No, no, I mean, no, I mean, what I'm, what I'm reading here is a request from the police department for 63857 and then the recommendation for 71148, which is.
Sounds like she finally granted.
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor granted.
Stuck out like a short thumb to me. But now we know why.
One of the things that, one of the things that I, I don't know, when we request money because I cannot see what the raises for the union are going to be usually when we put all this together.
Right.
And we put in the figure based on a certain salary that was like last year. We had been negotiating for the captain's position, the chief's position, holiday pay. I've been here now, it's going on my 11th year as chief. We've been requesting that for 11 years and, uh, we haven't received it never. Uh, this is the first year that we'll be receiving holiday pay. And there's also a 1% increase for the union that was not included in there, so the union got the 1% raise effective July 1st. When we, when we made our request, we did not know these particular facts. That's why we requested the lower amount than we're granting the higher amount. Is that clear?
You made it, you made it very clear. I appreciate you explaining that.
Anything else, JP? Counselor Riss?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, uh, while we have the chief, anything on crossing guards, that would be starting on page 40.
Uh, crossing guards, we're, we have, you know, various intersections in the city. Uh, we determine where the, the most dangerous places are. Every year I get requests for, you know, an additional 20 crossing guards and it's not going to happen. We're lucky we can fill these slots with the people that we have. So, we pick up the most dangerous, the most logical places for, uh, the children across the schools and have to have the crossing guards. We have a couple of spares there, a, uh, hourly employee, they come in for, you know, X amount of hours in the morning and X amount of hours in the afternoon and, uh, you know, their guy comes home from their salaries change in a long time. Uh, you know, they're at the very, very low end. Most other areas pay at least $5 or $6 an hour more than, than we pay. So, they are, you know, that.
I mean, the appropriation is approximately what it was last year, so.
Yeah, yeah, and so we haven't, they haven't received a raise in a while.
And detention's also yours, so, um, NIMLIP, is that what we pay to house?
We, the, the amount for that, like.
That'd be on page 41.
Like 15,000. That's our, that, that 15,000 dollars is probably the best spent money that we have in this whole budget. Uh, what we did years ago, um, I want to say probably close to 20 years ago is, is all of the communities in Hampshire County came to an agreement with the Sheriff's Department where we now bring our prisoners over to the jail. And it's based, I believe, I think it's 90 cents per person. I think it's 90 cents. Based on the population, the latest census figures, I believe it's 90 cents per person we get assessed, which comes up with 15,000 dollars. That saves us overtime because we're mandated to watch every prisoner that we have. We do not have detention attendants, so if I had a prisoner, I would either A, have to take an officer off the street or B, call someone in for overtime for probably eight or more hours. This money is spent, they will house our prisoners, we pick up the prisoner, we process him in booking, put him in the cruiser and drive them over to Route 66. It takes the liability off of us. They will transport that prisoner over to court in the morning, so we have that contact of the initial arrest, the very short booking process and they go over to jail and the jail holds. And every community in Hampshire County, to my knowledge, is in vogue with this program. And, you know, we'll bring over, you know, six, 700 prisoners a year. So, if you think about that, the cost on overtime or low or higher detention attendants would probably be over 100,000 dollars.
And they just invoice us for this?
Right.
And I remember, um, Bruce, when we had, uh, we, when we had detention attendants, could get.
Could get. So, then I'd have to fill them overtime.
Good officer.
And then we're mandated by the state to do 15-minute checks. And when I say a 15-minute check, it's not looking up a TV camera, it's going down and physically swiping a card at the particular cell that the prisoner is in, look in, make sure they're okay, and then 15 minutes later you're doing the same thing. So, you can't just watch them on a TV camera. So, it's, it's achieved the, I'm sorry, it's 95 cents, uh, based on the population, 95 cents. Thank you.
Anything else for the chief, because we're kind of at dispatch where I think is the fire, I think dispatch is the fire.
Fire department supervises dispatch, I'm just curious.
It's, we jointly supervise the fire department as a budget.
Okay.
It's better with numbers, that's what I mean.
Chief, what we'll do is, you know, we just won't be approved by the council until June, but again, everything has to be in the subcommittee, but if, if any of the counselors have questions, we'll get them to the mayor, we'll get them to the mayor and then they'll get back to you.
I'm sorry.
Sure, mayor, go ahead, absolutely.
Um, I also have animal control, it's headed for the.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm wondering if.
That is the chief's.
If the chief.
Okay.
And while he's still here, we should talk public dispatch because even though it's under their.
Oh, sure, absolutely. I don't, I don't think Bruce would mind saying.
So, we want to go to the animal control?
Yeah, we'll go to the animal, um. Do you know what, what page it is?
It's the last budget, I think in section two.
In section two, the last?
Last page.
It's like, we appreciate you going out of order.
That'd be under page?
Page 55.
55.
54.
Oh, animal inspection, okay.
Okay, animal inspections, uh, everything, this page is about this.
So, we dropped the animal inspector, which is why there's no.
We've gone from 20,000 down to 1,000.
How do we get animal control now?
Okay, what we're doing is, we spent a lot of time researching this. What we're doing is we're regionalizing with Westfield. We've viewed their services, viewed their kennels. I'm, I'm sure you know that our kennels have not been, have not been fit to, with the habitat, habitation of any animals in the wild. So, what we've been doing is if we do get an animal, that too, um, I was making arrangements for other communities, you know, and that's not easy because people that have bored dogs don't want a stray dog because of the shots and, you know, different things that they could have. You know yourself, if you're putting your dog in a kennel for vacation, you don't want it to be with a stray dog because you have to have them all up to date on their shots. So, we've been, we've had a tough time, but when we needed somebody, you know, we've had to outsource to different areas, um, to just house the dog overnight. So, the animal control person would bring it there, we would pay for the housing because our kennels are past dilapidated. Um, so, um, what we've decided to do is try to regionalize. I was at some mayor's meetings a while ago and Westfield is getting in, getting very much into this. They have really nice kennels. Um, they've actually just put on their third animal control officer. They, um, want to regionalize with the other communities. They offer services to Agloam now and West Springfield. So, we went up there to look at it and, um, went with their law department and found that this would be, um, big savings for us. Um, and, and I'll probably, um, let the chief take it from there as to what our past practice has been. So, probably hasn't been quite as organized as it should have been.
One, one question, mayor, before.
Sure.
You know, for a practical sense, for a resident, if, say they had a complaint of a dog, a dog they felt was vicious or, what, has Westfield given like a response time or?
Actually, uh, what, what they would do, we have it all set up with the chief, uh, what they would do, technically what anybody would do anyway is call dispatch. They did, there was a number for the animal control officer, but people were more apt to call dispatch.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't believe that any, any citizen will really notice any, any difference.
No, the citizens won't, but they will call dispatch and.
An officer would go first or?
Right now, right now, which we're, we're kind of in a state of flux right now until July 1st until actually contract is signed.
We, we have their services now.
We do, okay. We're, we're, it's working out really well. What'll be happening is if we get an animal complaint, let's say we get a stray dog, and we've had three or four in the last week, uh, our officers have been really good, they've actually picked up the dog and they have been bringing the dogs over to Westfield and dropping them off. In fact, one of the guys drove around the dog for three hours, it was so friendly, but that's another story. Uh, but Westfield, as the mayor said, now will come out, we call them, they have 24-hour, seven days a week service.
That's right.
So, if we need some at 3 o'clock in the morning, they will come out, they will pick up the animal, they will bring it, uh, bring it back to Westfield. So, that, that'll work out really well. What's happened before was we had an animal control officer that resided in Huntington with very poor, um, ability for us to contact that individual. So, when that individual left the city, we had a difficult time getting in contact with him and there were many times that we would house a dog in the police department and a crate in the garage to feed him, water him until the animal control officer came in, uh, because we couldn't go off the kennel. So, for us, this is.
This would be more efficient.
Much more efficient.
So, you're still, I'm sorry, you still, if a police officer has to get a dog, the dog is in a crate in your station until Westfield comes?
Yes.
It's still going to happen, but what you're saying is they're going to be much more responsive?
Much more responsive, they can get there a lot quicker. If we had a dog, let's say it was a vicious dog, our, our officers would try to go after the vicious dog. We would get professionals out, they would monitor where the animal was, they would come down, they would, they would take the noose, they'd get the dog, they'd be able to take it, they're professionals, this is what they do. So, uh, the response time from Westfield, although we have yet to use it, my guess would be, they'd probably be out here within a half an hour.
As I recall, though, you still have some enforcement duty on our animal control laws.
Yes, yeah.
If there's a complaint, it's not about a vicious or dangerous animal, but a complaint, dogs running around the neighborhood and not on a leash.
Right.
You find, you send your officer to the owner and say, hey, you're violating the law.
And that really is, that really has never changed.
It's always been your job.
And it's going to be a lengthy follow-up then and over animal control, but right now if there's a nuisance, uh, dog.
A nuisance?
We would send an officer over to knock on the door and say.
It's, it's always been your case, this isn't new. Okay, that's what I.
And I can also tell you too, Dan, that's a really good question because typically what's been happening for a long time is the, the first thing you want to do, and they've done it successfully many times, the dog has his license, that's his call home. So, dispatch would get the dog, dog would come in, check his peg, call the house, they come and pick him up, off he goes. So, that's, you know, been very successful and they'll continue to do that versus calling Westfield.
Counselor Hayes, you have a question?
What about animals that are good dogs?
Good, great question and I've got a perfect story for you. Yesterday, we had a python.
Ah, you opened the door!
Don't be snakes.
A python. Uh, every animal is unique. If it's a dog or a cat, it's very easy to call animal control. Wild animals handled by a variety of agencies, add to one of the list, but most of them fall under environmental police. With the python yesterday, we called them up, they had a, uh, environmental police officer, Sal Hadley, he was here within, uh, within about 25 minutes and I came to, took custody of the python. Tough to get a little, uh, handcuffs on pythons, so it's long.
And there's one, oh, go ahead, sorry. And these animals are going to shelters?
What they do, Jen, is the law is that, that we would hold them for seven days, so that's what they do. They would hold, if they don't have their pet, you know, little ticket home or the call home, uh, Westfield comes and picks them up, they hold them for seven days and then they would give them to a shelter to be adopted. But when they hold them.
Do they go to no-kill shelters?
Yeah, when they hold them.
Yes.
Yeah, correct, yes, the answer is yes, but then when they hold them, they also give them their shots and, you know, there's quite a, quite a list of things that they do, um, that are, you know.
So, both dogs and cats are going to no-kill shelters?
Right, she's up for cats right now that are available for adoption if you'd like to go by. There are four cats right now available for adoption if you'd like to go by.
Yeah, a lot of times they don't even get out of her seven-day home.
Right.
They're adopted from there. They don't even get to the next stage, which is the shelter and the.
If you're contracting a company, I just think it's nice to have a no-kill shelter that you're contracting.
Well, and the other thing is too, the, one of the, uh, one of the animal control officers worked for many, many years at the TJ O'Connor Shelter in Springfield and was, you know, trained in raids, you know, when you, when the police do raids and there's could be vicious animals and all that. So, they're very competent and, um, I felt, I, I felt very happy about seeing their facilities and, you know, their domain. And we almost came back with two dogs.
Yeah, we are, we are.
And a cat.
Generally dog lovers, I, you know, I love dogs. Uh, and I would have to say that out of every 10 dogs that are picked up and brought into our station, nine of those dogs end up just leaving there because we will make every effort to contact the owner. I mean, the guys go out of the way to find that dog, pack, to find out who it is, to talk to the neighbors and say, okay, you know, this dog here, does anybody have any idea who it belongs to? There's that one in 10 where, you know, people abandon animals, that's where they end up going.
Saves 8,000.
Does, uh, police department have a microchip scanner, your own?
We do not, but we have used it from Dr. Aitken, he's been wonderful. Uh, we have to give him a call, uh, he's, he's come out in the middle of the night for an injured animal for us. He has that scanner, we'll bring the dog down, he'll scan and say, okay, this is where you got it. And it, it works out great.
Yes, sir. It's like a lot of places now, they, they put a little microchip in the animal's skin and then.
You can tell how long it, if there's any difficulty.
Scan it, whoop, tells you where they go.
Yeah, when they come out of shelters, they have it.
That's cool.
I mean, Karen, just roughly, just what, how much are we saving here?
8,000.
8,000, okay.
I don't know if you want to expand on your new position. I'll say, I'll say.
What are you doing?
I'll leave that up to you.
Did we hire him?
I could also tell you that, um, roadkill has been reassigned also.
Not to.
So, not, not.
I was going to say.
Anyone interested. But, um, we've also, that is not part of animal control in the regionalization, they're not going to come up and get squirrels off the road. So, we have, uh, one of our really diligent staffers that was happy to do it, does it on his regular time.
Does he work under commission or something?
No, he's a regular employee, he's a regular full-time position and he just does it during his regular work there.
Dennis the P.
Dennis the P?
Yeah. But what we do is we give him, uh, a police vehicle, he uses, he's a special officer. He works part-time for us, so he has his traffic vest, he grabs our pickup truck, he goes out, he'll pick up any roadkill. Uh, we just call it in and tell them where they are and he makes listening, he lives every day, he picked up two today, he'll go pick them up and take them.
He said he's got a run-on money, so if anybody's interested. He said he's got a run-on money, so if anybody's interested.
Just don't look at anybody, don't go over his house for soup, okay?
Exactly.
I have one more question, Karen. So is this a flat fee for the year, or is there the possibility that holidays are X amount, or 2:00 in the mornings, X amount?
So this is, this amount is based on, just like the Hampshire County jail, it's 50 cents per resident. So the flat amount fee is around $8,000. And then they, we put in some extra, every pickup, there's an hourly wage for pickup, and then if the dog is, has to get all the shots, then you have to pay all the shots. Now, those fees would normally go to the owner when the owner retrieves the dog, but should the dog be abandoned, then we would have to incur those costs.
And they provide the shots whether somebody picks them up or not, and if the owner is not found, then we're.
So there is a possibility that there could be some sort of appropriation or something?
If we have a run-on, we lost dogs, we have to pay for more.
Well, you know, what we're doing over the last year or two is asking the past animal inspector for a list of, you know, how many dogs he would house or pick up. And I noticed that they were all into the PD, out of the PD, into the PD, out of the PD. And we housed, the only time we housed them, because I was really nervous about it, and I would know because I had the purchase order open too, and I would have to make the contact to house them somewhere else for the seven days, was when we had a situation with some vicious dogs that were court-ordered to be housed. And that's it. And that's the first time that's happened, and I don't know.
You'll find that most of them were court-ordered to take the dogs, to see if they're vicious, you know, all of them.
So we're thinking this is going to be a win-win for the animals, and facilities are looking really nice, and like I said, the adoption, and we were very happy with everything we saw there.
Anything else on animal control?
So the hourly rate is what?
Well, we're paying by population.
Right, 3,000.
Right, which I thought was pretty fair. And then there's, I actually have the contract in my office, there's, if they're called out in the middle of the night, I know there's a special.
50 cents did you just say?
50 cents per resident, so.
Oh, that's at the 8,000.
So we pay a yearly fee, or if, we could pay monthly, whatever, but it's spread out over the fiscal year. And then it'll, our prices is based on, you know, if they get an animal, they don't get any, we don't pay them anything, but if they get an animal, they give them all their shots, as well as they show.
So we have to pay their per capita animal cost?
50 dollars, 75 dollars after hours.
Right.
Plus 25 dollars a day, and then the shop.
Right. And then what also too is, they have a service set up for injured animals, or we could use their service, they have somebody that they use all the time, or we could maintain to use our own Dr. Hayden. So we contacted him too.
Trying to get a handle on whether if somebody comes in the middle of the night, on a Sunday or Saturday night.
There is a premium amount.
Then, you know, digging up on Wednesday afternoon.
Bruce wants to.
Yeah, I can't say anything better. What we did is, when we knew, we spoke to the mayor, and we knew we were going to come up with this sort of a program. We developed a policy in the police department as far as when you will call and when you will not call. And the officers out in the street need to get permission from a supervisor to be able to call for outside service to come in, because we know it was associated with it. So in most cases, we're going to try to grow the dog and take them ourselves and bring them over. In situations where it's a vicious animal, injured dog, that's when we need the license and that service. So we're trying to keep the cost down.
Just a quick question on contracts and appointments. I'm not sure, this isn't the animal control officer that we have. Was there an appointment for that person?
Yes.
Three-year appointment, two-year?
It was a three-year, exactly.
Where were we in the contract period?
I can pull out our list of boards and pages, and I can tell you when that was due to retire, but what I did is eliminated the position. And I eliminated it on the spot. So it doesn't go to.
Is it eliminated out of the paper? Has it gone out of the paper?
I believe it's still exist.
It still exists. It's just not funded. It's a position that's not.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we decide in the future.
In the future, we want to build a kennel and all those things.
We could add it without having to add a position formally. We just fund it again. But I like this place. Does that answer your question?
I answered my question.
Anything else on animals?
No.
Back to dispatch. If you could stay a specific man, in case you have to, what helps you, fire chief?
Wow, a lot of love between the police and fire department.
That's on page, that's on page 42. Page 42.
It went down? Well, the budget's level-funded, exactly.
Chief, do you want to just give a general, I know that fairly recently you've had a new head of dispatch, right, and there's been some changes, maybe you just want to kind of review that a little bit. I don't have anything specific on the appropriations. I mean, it all is, as Chris said, it's pretty level-funded, so.
Yeah, she's still, probably for the last year, unfortunately, relying heavily on state grants for overtime, but much to Melissa's chagrin, the state is very, very slow in reimbursing us those grants. I know some of them are in excess of two years. We've been waiting on reimbursement. So as that program seems not to work, we may in the future steer away from these state grants, because I think we're at least two fiscal years, starting our third, of using free cash payback, but the state hasn't reimbursed us. The downside is, it's going to reflect in some increases in dispatch. That agency seems to be untouchable as far as getting intervention from our elected officials of the state, lighting a fire. They're very good at playing the fingers back, it's our delay considering reimbursement, knowing the grant program is low. For a lot of money, we are paying for dispatch, we are getting off extremely cheap. When you look at some of the comparable communities, and what they're doing, and the staff they have, based on national consensus standards, these aren't mandates. Our dispatch is grossly understaffed, therefore grossly refunded. How they get the work done, they do, I'll never understand. The dispatch supervisor out of her four days, two of those, she's by herself, dispatch, working as a dispatcher, and trying to do dispatch supervision duties. So we are getting an extreme return on investment for dispatch. So again, we're not even at a quarter million dollars, and neither department goes anywhere without those dispatches. Last year, fire responded to over 2,500 emergency calls for service. Yours' total calls were?
About 16,000.
About 16,000. And I would venture to say 90% of those were handled by one dispatcher. If you've ever been in there, when there's something as simple as a two-car accident with injuries, they're dispatching the cruisers, the ambulance, fire truck, if this needed. They're running plates. It's something where, you know, we're not available, we don't have enough staff, they're calling U.S.A.L., all being done by one dispatcher. So.
Cool.
Yeah, if we have, if there's a hole, and we need to contact electric companies, they're the ones making that call. So they are extremely task-statured, and they do a phenomenal job. A couple of years ago, being in there when our officers were involved in chase, there was one dispatcher working there involved in chase, trying to contact somebody heading down East Street, North Hampton and Hoyok in state, and getting, writing down what our officers were saying, and 911 was ringing, and the business line was ringing. And the dispatcher was trying to do all three.
Is it only one person for all shifts?
Day shift, two days a week, there's two people, is the dispatch supervisor and another dispatcher.
And you pick the days when you expect them to be the hardest hit?
Just the way the schedule flies. What happens, if I can interrupt for a second, what happens on that is to make accommodations for all the shifts. One dispatcher has to work two midnight days, or 11:00 to 7:00, 11:00 o'clock at night to 7:00 in the morning, and then they have to work two, 7:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. It's a terrible shift, but that's the only way to work for the number of people that we have. So the hours aren't very good, and the fire chief said, they do a phenomenal job. There's a number of people out there, they just do an incredible job. And the thing the fire chief left out, we now do emergency medical dispatching also. So if someone calls up, a citizen calls 911, and there's a medical problem, they have a list, a book right in front of them, and they're giving medical dispatch over the phone, as well as sending an ambulance, a cruiser, fire apparatus, and answer another call all at the same time. That's one person. And what they do is, I don't know honestly how they do it, and I don't know why there was a longer one, because it's a very stressful job to do the way you job with. And by the way, the on-call incident.
And I think Jane can shed a little bit of light. Lauren is the supervisor, she does a tremendous job. And she's been also regarding the grant situation, she's been working with, Val is the one that, you know, really noticed the grant situation. So she's been working with Val, and Val's been working with the administration as to sometimes if we can, you know, do these in July versus, you know, using, getting, we get to the word of the money, then using them. So Val is working with Lauren on that, Lauren's excellent at what she does. But also Jane's been working with her on another situation, you know, for her supervisory, regarding the on-call dispatchers. And that was where a lot of overtime was, in our training, and then, you know, they weren't called in, so then they would go elsewhere after they received the training. So Jane, you could probably speak on that a little bit.
With the change of the job titles, one thing we did was add another category. So now there's the head dispatcher, the dispatcher, and then on-call dispatchers. The on-call are now going to be a pool of just that, on-call, to hopefully reduce the overtime budget for dispatch. We're trying to train them gradually. We just had two that went through the training program, and they're now, the second one just got cleared to be on his own. Now we have another one that is going through background check right now, and she will be starting to train with a dispatcher. And then once she reaches a certain level, she will go out to the required, I think the DAP stick or the three, I mean, there's three programs that they have to go through?
There's the DAP dispatch training, 911, to get certified, and DAP to leave training, they have to clear with that. Now, if we leave, which the fire chief and I was talking about, leave the training program, is 10 weeks of training. And, you know, quite frankly, I would not want to be in dispatch. It would drive me absolutely crazy.
So we're trying to bring in the on-calls one by one, and be able to do it at a slower pace, instead of having to say, we're out of dispatchers, we need to get somebody in and train now. So this way they can get the training, for the length that they feel comfortable and that the dispatchers feel that they need to get.
And what does a, what does an on-call dispatcher make for all this?
During the training program, they're only paid 11 dollars an hour. The on-calls, now that they have a title and a pay grade, they are at 16, like 1631, and they.
A lot of responsibility.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I'm sorry.
A lot of responsibility.
16, that's a lot. Okay.
Anything, anything else on dispatch?
Do we do, do we do anything with false alarms? Like, do we ever penalize?
It's in the ordinance, isn't it?
There's a police alarm.
Yeah, there is an ordinance that they get, well, actually, two bites of the apple and a third one, they end up getting assessed $25 fine, and then it goes up to 15, then it goes up to 100.
I was thinking like, false alarms for fire.
Oh, for fire, okay.
For businesses.
There's nothing that, there's no statute that allows us, and we don't have an ordinance that allows us. We don't have problem alarms. The problem, or the biggest problem with alarm, with municipal alarm system, we get away with telegraph system that was put in service in the 1800s, and went to the radio box system. The system is sensitive to close lightning strikes. Willis and campus is entirely protected by municipal alarm system. Willis had bought us the receiver for that in 1999, public safety complex we built. If there's a lightning strike anywhere near the Willis and campus, it will get, probably every building on campus will come in. But we know, we hear the thunder clap, we see two or three buildings with Willis and come in. So it'll only be the captain going out to pick up, you know, roll a truck. But even if the private alarm systems, we don't have a problem with false alarms.
Well, I live in one of the mills, and I know that you guys are out there a lot for false alarms.
A lot of those are not false, they're not human error, by an occupant or a tenant or a borrower.
Oh, it's by definition, I get it. False alarm is someone actually playing a game, but someone pulling an alarm by mistake is a human error, and you don't call that a false alarm.
The mills are, especially the Pleasant Street mills, the alarm systems are very sensitive to water pressure change in the street. And one of the mills, last year when they had their sprinkler system serviced, they replaced some key components. And it was about 5:00 every morning, we'd get an alarm, because one of the pumps in the water distribution system for the city would kick in, and that 2 PSI spiked the pressure on Pleasant Street would trip the fire alarm.
I hope we fix that.
Yeah, it was scary.
There was the fire.
I thought it was the lava, yeah.
But, I mean.
Catch up early.
How much does it cost us to go out? Because you guys were out there like constantly.
Um.
I mean, is that something we should look at? We're like, that's obviously the building owner's responsibility for something that's broken, but it costs the city money over and over and over again.
Yeah, the cost, you're probably talking, if you went out to FEMA reimbursement rates for the apparatus, and salary of the firefighters, you'd probably talk at $300 per call. The downside to that is, then the companies, the property owners are going to be hesitant if they're not mandated by Fire Code to put in a fire alarm system. They're not going to allow it to go in there. And just flying the building up.
Right.
And we don't want that. Even though everybody has a cell phone today, we want to be told sooner than later. And I'd rather have a truck out there, there'd be nothing, have a piece of thing, and I might not, it was too late.
It just seemed like there was, it was just thousands of dollars that the city was spending for a problem that wasn't getting fixed.
Yeah, that was, that one was nicely, actually, that one was multiple problems. But the biggest problem with that one was if 5:00 AM it got called, it must kick down the pressure for the city to post.
Anything else on?
Certainly appreciate dispatch.
Moving on to the fire department. On page 44. Well, first of all, the chief, he was kind enough to provide a red onboard here for us.
I never, I didn't.
He didn't get one?
Thank you. Yeah, no school.
Well, you didn't give us one, fire chief, on page 44. He's got more money there.
He's a, he's a, Bruce, he's a better brown-noser.
There you go.
Thanks, Bruce, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
I'd like the fire, the police chief, I'll give you an opportunity if you want to make a few opening comments here, you know, overview of your department chief.
Well, once again, this budget will leave the deputy chief's position vacant, will leave one firefighter's position vacant. We will have, as you can see further, there's two projected retirements next fiscal year. That will be replaced. The good news is, we're bringing them in, they'll lower salary. So I'm seeing, I'll see some savings there. Most of the line items remain the same. It's going to be like every other year, don't be surprised to be seeing in January.
If you want to go to line items, I just had a couple on page 44. I don't know if you have, you probably don't have it, maybe you do, or not. So anyway, it was a sick leave incentive. Looked like last year you had 19,000, almost 20,000, you requested 40, and the mayor gave you 40. So I guess what is the sick leave? Is that for people that are leaving, like retiring?
That is for people retiring, it's contractual.
I know we had one recently, so.
There's one, one just retired, which was the 19,000 that was budgeted. I'm sure you've seen the supplemental, so we have another firefighter, duvet illness, is going to have to retire. And then this is for next year, two firefighters retiring next fiscal year.
Uniform, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me. So what does that means, is they get to be paid for their sick leave they haven't used?
Correct.
That's the incentive. The incentive is, come to work, even if you're a little sick, so that you can save all that for when you retire.
It's not a portion, it's not a hundred portion of it.
I don't know, what is it?
They can earn up to 175 days.
Okay.
Which almost every firefighter that's been here long enough to hit that is at that. The city buys back 170 and 50%.
For that track.
So what does that mean? We buy it back? We have to pay them the 100?
We pay them back for.
Basically 50% of the.
50, 70% of 170 days.
Probably the better name would be sick leave buyback.
Instead of, right, instead of sick leave incentive.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're incentive.
Well, incentive is, we're incentive.
Do you want me to change it?
No.
For next year?
That's all I have. I like incentive, it actually makes.
Under uniforms, you went up about 7,000, maybe? Is that just turnover of total gear?
The biggest increase there in the narrative portion, to explain it, the badges, of course, we.
We're back to the 50s.
The badges that we're wearing are more than 34 years old. Because nobody in the fire department remembers the old badges. Some of them are held together, the clasp is held together, the baling wire, the center is chipped, they're old.
What do you want, uniform?
Unfortunately, they're cheap.
Bottom of 44.
We work with two uniform vendors to work on pricing. Replacing some of these badges, the design that we had isn't made anymore, surprisingly. So we have three different styles that firefighters that have replaced badges are wearing. So we want to, we're going through a standard design, which will be easier to replicate as they get damage or loss down the road. And it's much less than replicating the one we currently have.
And they're all going to wear the same one, except for the one that says cap, don't achieve.
Right. The reason there's so many is each firefighter has two badges, and they also have a hat badge. So for 20, with the call force, we are at 28 firefighters, each getting three badges. It adds up quickly.
What are we going to do with the old badges?
Same thing we did the last badge, they could put the shadow box on them up for display forever. The last badge, whatever year the old ones were retired, because they're all numbered, and it numbered. The last badge, whatever year the old ones were retired, because they're all numbered, and they're numbered based on seniority, are all in shadow box hanging in the hallway outside the office area.
Under the repair of vehicles, there was a request, again, this is on 45, page 45. Last year was 13,5, and you requested 7,500, and the mayor gave you 7,500. As you said earlier, we've had repairs come in almost every year. So do you think it's going to be sufficient, or is this what you're saying about in January, you'll be probably looking for a supplemental?
That's the amount that will balance the budget.
I see.
What I'm seeing as a trend, if I might bear, is that you level fund with hope that these kinds of things might turn out to be better than they usually do. In other words, you don't know if you're going to have to repair a fire truck, you don't budget for it, and then you, we either use free cash or reserve or stabilization, God forbid, to pay for it if we have to. I mean, that's the only way you can balance it, you can't, if you put in a lot of money for repairs and you don't use it, then some other budget is losing. I see why they're doing it, in other words, that's, it makes sense.
I can tell you a neighboring community had a pump fail, and when the pump failed, it also damaged the transmission of the truck. They spent $19,000 to get that repaired and outside the building. Based on the age of my oldest apparatus, being 20 years old, that could happen tomorrow. It doesn't, but one repair could pretty much wipe out.
But that's why we have a quote-unquote rainy day fund. I mean, you can't predict that, you hope it doesn't happen, but it could. If you have a ton of fires, then that might happen. What are you going to do?
Did you say something about a pump and the transmission?
Yes, because that's what turns, the transmission that moves the truck down the road also turns the pump on the truck that puts the water on.
So you're saying that a repair not made to one item could lead to further damage to the whole?
Could damage the engine as well.
Is there any way to predict?
Well, that all happened at once.
To predict this?
That happened at once.
That happened, the department happens to do it here outside, like we do every week, doing a weekly check to make sure it works. And the pump seized up, and the drive shaft snapped, and it broke the output shaft right out of the transmission, so.
What would a repair like that have taken to fix the pump? You don't know how it's bad, though, do you?
You don't, the recommendation is they get rebuilt every 15 years.
Okay.
We don't do that. Motor repair stays on top of the normal maintenance of greasing them. And normally, you could hear a noise out of the pump before it does that. But no amount of preventative maintenance is going to be bulletproof.
I was just wondering if there are certain repairs we should be making to avoid additional expenses. And if there were, you would tell us, right?
The $7,500 pretty much is only preventative maintenance.
Right.
That's why, you know, the first time that it's not ordinary maintenance, or tires, or oil changes, something breaks, that line item is dead.
Well, that's just like, I think what JP's asking, that's like when you bring a vehicle over to motor repair for an oil change. They don't just do the oil change, if they notice anything else, you know, they're on it. Then this doesn't.
Anything else on fire before we move on to ambulance? Looks like we're pretty level funded here in the fire departments. I had no other, anything else? We'll go over to ambulance on page 47. Just give us an overview of how our runs were this year, I know this is kind of one that we can, we kind of have a net positive, maybe?
Right now, this fiscal year, call volume is up on the ambulance side. Revenue is going to, I don't know, maybe slightly see for just Melissa. We're doing very good on revenue. The discouraging part is, you saw what we bill out and what we collect because of Medicaid, Medicare. We're probably less than 50%, closer to 40% of what we bill out, we actually take in now.
Because of the low rate of reimbursement, I mean, that's what Medicaid reimburses at a certain figure.
Medicaid pays a certain rate, and that's it. We increased our rates two years ago now?
Two or three years.
Two years ago now.
It was that long? That doesn't seem that, it wasn't three.
I think it was, not this, yeah, because last fiscal year was a partial year. So this is the second year, based on the company that does our billings, recommendations, and looking at Western Mass. Prior to our rates, we were in the bottom three for our billing rates for services. We're still in the bottom third for Western Mass, we're not even in the middle. The problem is, our demographic is Medicare, Medicaid, but we have a lot of patients, so we're not getting our full billing rate. We also go in spurts where we have a lot of uninsured. Even though there's a law that says you have to have insurance in the Commonwealth, these people will tell us straight up, I'd rather pay the fine on my taxes than pay for insurance. And we cannot, we cannot go after, we can bill them, but we cannot go after them because they're eligible for free care, which only the hospitals get reimbursed for. So it's a write-off.
But you budget for that contingency, the fact that that happens?
No.
In a sense.
The ambulance revenue has no impact on my budget, that's all general fund money.
Okay, but ambulance revenue as compared to the budget, where is it at? Is it, how much of revenue comes in that compensates for the budget? I'm just curious if, is it a profit, is it a negative, is it a?
It's hard to tell, the way the budgets, I mean, if you look at what we take in receipts. Versus what the actual ambulance budget is, we're making 200 to 300,000 dollars a year.
Right, but none of them.
It doesn't reflect salary and benefits of the firefighters and the ambulance.
I get you, okay.
So it's not self-sufficient?
It's not self-sufficient, but we are at least getting some revenue out of a service.
That's the description, Chief Horsett used to describe it as a service we provide to the taxpayers that returns money to the general fund.
One of the few services that does return money.
Did you say 600?
I believe it's 600.
It's not bad.
The 5319 line, that is where the money for the billing company comes out of. That's the one that I came back a couple months ago and needed more, because we're, that is based on.
Collections.
550,000 in revenue, I think, the 228.
Who pays that?
Yeah, probably.
Right around, so anytime we exceed that.
Professional services?
Professional services.
This one is professional.
Should be 22,018. 47?
Purchase of services, totally.
I think it's, this here is miscellaneous professional and technical services.
Right, 5319.
I see it there. There's something on page 48 that's confusing me, but I see that now, okay.
And there's also, we, Melissa recently did an RFP for this service. And we awarded a bid to the current company, and we'll be reducing their fee that they charge us. So we'll see a slight increase, a slight decrease in what we're paying.
What we're paying now. Anything else on ambulances? I think that's it, chief, unless you have something to do with wiring.
Yes. Do you want him to talk to the breathing apparatus bottles?
Oh, yes.
Get to new business?
Sure.
Jump it out, just so.
Yep, no, no, while you're here, chief, we have a request for, I got it here?
16,000.
$16,000 for appropriation for, from free cash for SCBA bottles, which are breathing bottles. And it looks like they're 15-year expectancy, maybe you could just talk about what the need is, so.
Sure, these bottles go back, they're on the, before we run our back way into the building, they contain the breathing.
Scott Airpack, what I would know it as, or?
These were all acquired through a combination of federal and state grants, the air packs themselves and the bottles. We went with this style, carbon fibers, they're lighter, they're smaller, to reduce the weight that we're wearing. The downside is, the bottles only have a 15-year life. And that's based on Department of Transportation standards, it's nothing that says that's any control of. The bottles that we have currently, I think there's 15 out of our inventory of 50 that are taken out of service. What this does is reduce the number of bottles we have, it limits the number of times the firefighter can go into a burning building. They're rated at 30-minute bottles, in all actuality, you get about 12 minutes of work out of them. And you have to come out, change a bottle, go back in. As we get lower in bottles, one of the two things happens, we either have to call in mutual aid because we're out of bottles and we can't go back in, or we bring in Southampton or Russell, they have a mobile trailer. The problem is, the turnaround time for any fire of any size, we would run out of bottles before we had full bottles, which means interior firefighting and search and rescue would have to come to a halt. Working with the vendor, our two different vendors, the vendor that provides the bottles, because they have to be certified by Scott who makes the pack, we're able to get, we're buying just the bottle, not the valve, because it's a savings not to buy the valve. And the vendor that does our fire extinguisher work is going to work with us to change them over, and it'll cost. So we're going to save a considerable amount of money by just buying a bottle and off the valve and working with the vendor to change them over.
Does it sit, any shivers through anyone? The thought of a limited amount of time, I always had the impression, call me naive, that there was a sufficient amount of time. Should we have a major fire, people are going in at search and rescue, and they have plenty of breathing apparatus, it gets exchanged, whatever. How long can you last? 12 minutes, you said?
Yeah, average rate, it depends.
Per bottle, but I mean.
After, with, because the air is so dry, after two bottles, you start getting a sore throat, you start having difficulty breathing. So we have a policy that's a statewide standard, after two bottles, because of workload and the air, you have to be out of firefighting for 15 minutes. And that's based on, whether like this weekend where it's hot, it's probably a half an hour. So after two bottles, you have to take a break. Get some water in, you try to get some, depending on the weather conditions, maybe some humidified oxygen should make anything work again. But the limit is four. Right now, we don't have the inventory to put any firefighter through four bottles, or a working fire, put all of our firefighters through four bottles.
So we have to call out for mutual aid?
We would have to call in, and then luckily, all of our mutual aid partners use the same packs we do, but there are other departments in Hampshire County that use a different manufacturer, and the bottles aren't compatible. So we would call our mutual aid partners and hope either Russell or West Hampton could get here with their air trailer and start filling bottles before we ran out of bottles.
So maybe fill them. Russell or West?
West, West.
Russell or West.
Sounds like we need these.
I don't have any more questions on this.
I'll make a motion that we accept the appropriation.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second on the request to, request the full city council approve a $16,000 appropriation from free cash for the SCBA bottles. Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor. Take care of that other business, chief. Another one of yours, retained earnings overtime.
Oh, I thought he was leaving, I apologize.
Wait, that's the, oh, the sick leave, sure, that's the retired. I assume this was the firefighter that just retired?
No, he isn't retired yet, however.
I know you had a little ceremony, I wasn't able to.
This is another one, this is.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you're talking about appropriation.
Yeah, supplemental appropriation, 19,000.
This firefighter has been out with a respiratory illness since COVID, September, somewhere around there. The only remaining hurdle is, here, end of the month. So he's gone through the medical panel, they've approved it. So within the month, or the end of this month, or by June at the latest, his disability retirement will be approved. And this was an unanticipated retirement.
This is by contract, right?
This is just a contractual thing to pay him, like we talked earlier for.
Buyback?
The buyback. I mean, I don't see an option here of not funding it.
We could say no, and then we get sued. Pay a lot more to.
Anyone want to make a motion on this supplemental?
I'll make a motion to a crew.
Sure.
How many sick days does that represent, the buyback?
That's 170.
Buying back 170.
At 50.
This is another employee, he's been maxed out for probably the last five or six years.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I have a motion.
We have a motion of second to ask the full city council approve a supplemental appropriation of 19,810, 44 cents from free cash for fire department sick leave incentive, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Now you're done, chief, I guess.
Thanks for mentioning that one.
Unless you want to do, there's a public enterprise for the public works, if you want to.
Can I have some? Are we still, are we still in?
Yeah, we're still in public safety, because there's a few catch-all, catch-all departments, which hopefully the mayor or the, they're leaving the finance.
Inspectors.
Right, starting on page 49. We have the building inspector, that's probably the largest of all these. And Melissa, maybe you can answer, if not, we can wait for the mayor. I know our current building inspector was out for a while, is this incurring anything additional in this budget, or is everything supposed to be?
This, this assumes, you know, the same.
Level of.
Level of service, and that he will be here while I want, more of a normal service. It doesn't have any additional funds in it for fill-ins, if that was necessary.
What was their request for part-time clerical? It looks like they made quite a, when they want another employee, it looked like they asked for like 17,000, and the mayor, mayor funded them approximately the same, just a slight increase, it's like the second 5117.
But that's the same, that's the same amount of coverage that there is now, and that employee's getting a step increase.
Okay, so that's just a little.
But he had asked for additional coverage.
Yeah, the 17, you're asking about the 17.
The 17, right.
Yes, he'd like more hours for clerical and.
But you're just funding him.
Yes.
Approximately what it was, given a slight increase.
The same hours he has, level funding, it's a little bit more because of stuff, but we're giving that person the same hours that clerical has now.
And same on the building inspector, part-time, is that?
That's been slightly reduced, and that reduction did come with some input from the building inspector. The position had been, I believe, at 14, and this is at 13 hours, is one hour less, because when we asked for level budgets, that was one of his recommendations.
And just to clarify, when we met with everybody, you know, we told them, obviously, they're under the understanding that I will cut their budget. So I met with them all individually and asked them.
Let them make.
Where, right, would you like to, you know, would you please, you know, we would entertain your input as to where you would like the cuts to be. So they're all well aware that the cuts are going to happen. So in other words, how do you level fund your budget? Do you want me to level fund it for you?
Or you want to help?
Or, right, or, you know, and some of them, a lot of them have, you know, really good suggestions, it's their department, they're, you know, they're the managers. So a lot of, you'll notice a lot of the suggestions we, you know, I took, and what we did.
Anything else on building inspector?
No.
JP? Gas inspector, it looks again like it's pretty much level funded, unless there's anything different, Karen, that.
Yeah, it's working wonderful, the gas and plumbing is the same person, working wonderful.
Okay, plumbing is approximately the same. Sealer of weights, is that the?
It's not Tommy Murphy, is it?
Uh, no, he retired.
That's, I thought.
Yeah, it's Tony.
Sorry, I asked you. Do you know who it is?
Tony.
Oh, my God.
Well, I know who he is, I just, you know, off the top of my head, I can't remember his last name, his name's Tony.
I can't remember his last name. Sealer of weights, I know that's a, that gentleman's been around, if it's the same one, he's been around.
Same one, same one.
Wiring inspector, it's about the same. Again, any counselors that want to ask any questions, these are just kind of the.
There's nothing changing, I think.
Right. So I believe that concludes public safety. What I'm going to do is I'll leave these open, and we'll make a motion like the last day on all of them, in case there's other questions.
Regarding the wiring, I was under the impression that there were extra calls for wiring inspections because of the new solar installations, and that those are extra, and they require significantly more inspections, if you see solar panels going up, is it?
Can I?
I can, I.
Any comments on that in terms of?
There wasn't a wiring inspector at my house, it was just a building inspector.
Oh, okay.
So I just want you to know that if that's the case. So I just want you to know that if that's the case, it was all approved by the city. I had solar panels and stuff. There was no wiring inspector.
Well, do you know the wiring inspector, it's seasonal on different things. One year-
Oh wait, I'm wrong.
After the storm, it was on the generators. Remember when we had severe storms and everybody lost power that October? After that, it was a whole run on generators.
On generators, yes.
Now, you know, it is solar, different things. But, you know, it's one thing one year, one thing another.
But they did inspect yours, Dan?
Yeah, I'm mistaken. He had to, but you know, it's, it's an easy inspection because it's a quick inspection inside and outside.
But you're right, Dan, it is a building too.
It is come. It is building and wire, I'm sorry. I didn't think he-
I was just trying to envision additional domain.
Because I saw him and I asked him, did you inspect?
Ron does a- No, Ron does a-
Ron does a great job. We're lucky to have-
There's a fee for that, isn't there?
Oh, absolutely. It's a benefit to the city, you know, for us, and to the residents that once Ron retired from his full-time job, because at one time he would just call in for his calls at 5 o'clock after his full-time workday and try to set up inspections, try to do them at night or whenever. Now, he's here every day. As a retiree, he's here every day. It's just, to me, a huge benefit to our residents where they don't have to wait for their inspections and he, it's really an excellent service. They have a great inspecting team.
And there's a charge. I mean, we pay, SolarCity pays the city for this, for inspection. So it's not like, even though there's an increase, it's not affecting the budget.
Okay. Anything else before we move on to section one, general government? Back on page one. Or we could start on page one of 133 pages. City council's salary, budget. Any questions, Councilor McCoy as president? Did you want to ask for any last-minute appropriations?
Just $50,000.
For the council president?
Well, just so the mayor knows, we did vote down an increase for ourselves.
I know, I was at the meetings.
We did vote it down.
I saw you.
Just want you to know, we did our part.
And I will give our clerk, council clerk credit because we did approve-
She asked for it and then she-
We did approve that and she was only to postpone it three years.
She listened to the slashing meetings.
She did tell me she was representing us at that meeting. She felt, felt she would be.
Yep, she's great.
And then we made our adjustments. So that's the same. Mayor's, I think the mayor's pretty close.
We did give her an increase of $5,000. It doesn't look like it's-
I don't believe it takes till, affect till halfway.
Oh, we only got half of it.
Exactly.
It'll be half, right?
So you budgeted for January first time?
For the successful candidate for January.
Less two cents, $490.
But that's why the budget only went up half of that.
Right, half. It's got a $2,500, $24,99, $98. Anything else? Again, I'm just, I didn't have anything started when I went through it earlier, so on the mayor's, but certainly if anyone has it, the-
Thanks.
Licensing, licensing board, again, everything is actually slightly, slightly reduced, I think.
Almost a half.
What's the reason for that, Karen?
Okay, so-
I mean, I'm going through here, it looks like part-time clerical's-
That's a great question.
$2,000, right?
Exactly. So when we, you know, as we do positions, the person, the clerical, person to the licensing board, happens to be my assistant, and we wanted to keep it in there. So what we did is we made it part of the position so that it's, you know, years ago, it was a separate clerking thing where it was paid separately. It had to be done on your own time, done after hours. So what we decided is because, you know, all the files are needed and it gives a lot of calls and has always been in our office, needed to stay in our office. And so she's allowed to do that during her, during her work times, which cuts down on any of the, you know, weekend hours or extra hours or things like that.
And it's part of her job description, though?
Yes, it's part of the job description, but if she's, you know, if the meeting is, obviously the meetings are not during our work hours, but the meeting's at, you know, 5 to 6.
She's compensated for it.
She's compensated for an after-hour meeting.
Exactly.
But she could drop like minutes in that, at her regular work.
Yes, she can. And do all the licenses, you know, if she can fit it all in, yes.
So that's the reduction?
That's a huge reduction. I mean, that's where the large reduction is.
Right. Okay. Anything else on licensing? City auditor?
City auditor, why were you there?
I just had one question. It looks like you're recommending 22.5 for a financial audit, that-
Do we pay that every year?
If we do, it's-
57.32, is this something that comes around, or is it?
So if you look on the next page, we're just combining, there's two departments and that audit is always managed by the auditor's office. We're just putting it in her department.
Oh, okay, so it's-
So it's the, it's the same, you know-
Oh, in other words, you moved it from one to the other, okay.
So it's just a housekeeping?
It's always been there. It's just a difference.
Telephone expense, it looks like it's the same. Assessors.
These departments are going to notice a lot of, you know, maybe different changes and cuts that people through, so general government cuts will hit.
Right, you know, I can see. Again, the cuts are kind of, I look first at the bottom line and it's about what it was last year and then it's kind of where the cuts came from.
Why do we call him the person and assistant assessor?
I don't know.
I remember that. And now it's a principal assessor. Is that because the pay plan has not changed its type?
No, this is something that's in the, in the KBS system, so I can change that.
Because he's principal assessor, right?
Right, but I think it might have started out, a lot of times the principal is an assistant, so, you know, it just never got changed, so.
A little language.
So where it says assistant assessor, it's really the principal assessor's salary.
Correct, yeah, so that'll be one of my corrections.
I'm just curious, oh, I see. It went down to 47 adjusted this year, but it was 57, so you're thinking it'll go up to?
Where are you, Dan?
The salary of the principal assessor?
Right, well, that was his, actually, that would have been the salary, that was the salary of the past person.
And that would have been what it was, with a step increase or?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I know we've posted a job for the principal assessor. Is, and obviously someone's filling in until that position is completed. Is that going to be a net addition, or is it, I mean, I don't know what, how much, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, we're, you're talking about this year's-
We're not obviously paying the, right. Once we cross into July, I mean, I don't know when it'll be filled.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. So once we cross into July, it's kind, it actually almost evens out right now. So what we do is we have a consultant. She's working an estimated 15 hours a week. Unbelievable person. Unfortunately, not interested in a full-time position, no matter how much we pay. She's just able to get that department up to speed in so many different ways. So we have posted it. Jane also, we posted it on, there's an assessors.
The professional association. I've sent it to all the local universities, all of the job placement organizations and-
It's on our website.
The website and the, I'm putting a very brief classified in Sunday's paper.
How long are we, we're obligated to advertise it until it's filled? I mean, we can advertise it until it's-
I have a closing date post, in the posting of June 5th, I believe it is.
But we don't have to.
We don't have to.
If you don't feel like you've got qualified candidates, you can continue.
We mark it as our appointment.
Right, exactly. I was just going to ask that too.
It's our appointment, what plan do we have?
I haven't seen that.
The question is, in other words, being a council appointment, once, you know, you have a field of candidates, is there a plan yet with, and maybe Council McCoy being here, is there a plan yet of how it would?
Well, we're to get the applicants, hoping for some really good ones. And obviously, it's a council appointment, so I would assume that the council-
He'll always speak to them. I can remember how we did it. You gave us all the appointments. The appointment committee met, the appointment committee met to review them and we whittled them down to three candidates based on, you know, a lot of people's recommendations. And then we interviewed them with your, well, Risa was there and we had to be very careful how we asked questions and everything. It was, it was a pretty good, same process. So it's all, it's all the council that makes all the decisions on it. With their recommendation.
Collecting of the-
Right, the applicants to personnel.
June 5th is the date that's posted right now, yes.
How many applications have we got?
Two.
Oh, that's both of what I was thinking.
Two more than you were thinking.
What are they, qualified applicants, that's the question.
Right, and whatever they are, you're, you'll be more, you know, obviously willing to, more than able to look at them at any time. We keep them all together. They'll all be in the personnel log.
Can you just PDF them to us?
I don't think you can do that legally.
I think that's a no.
It's personnel.
Yeah, because when we used to give out copies, we'd have to-
Why would you not be able to PDF an application?
Absolutely, you can PDF the application.
No, you don't, state law.
They have social security numbers.
They have information on that, it's like, yeah.
So X out the social security number.
Right. So I would say X out the social security number, but in that way, we could at least have a review of it.
Well, you will review them. They're your, it's your appointment and your application. So as they come in, you're more than welcome.
How do we know when they come in?
Well, normally, what we, what we do for all the rest of the appointments and for the city is we wait till the deadline and then go through all of them. We don't go through them as they come in. We, you know, keep them all together and nothing is done until, you know, the posting deadline. And then go through them all, you know, take your time and then decide who and if you want to interview anybody or recos.
So you give us copies on June 15?
You're correct.
June 15.
I mean, in a sense, I guess, this is finance. I guess I'd like to leave that to-
Right.
President McCoy and Chairman Winnie of Appointments to meet with the mayor and come up with a process of how they want it.
Joe, so you have one meeting in June?
Right, it's usually the appointments subcommittee that way.
The review of applications to the finance and appointments committee, so that-
In that way, we can, between Joe and Joy.
We won't make the appointment until maybe July.
But I think it's important what these councilors are saying, that we know the process, so everyone's-
Right, but that's the first meeting in June.
It's up to Joe and Joy to kind of set the process with the mayor.
Well, we, yeah, we don't have to be notified when the applications are being reviewed, when all the process. And that has to be public, it's a public meeting. You have to have an open meeting, so she has to designate those meetings. But on June 5th, when is our, whatever that meeting is, we should move it to the committee. Move, review the applications to committee. And then that process will have to be open, of course, to the public. Anyway.
Okay, but I mean, I think that's a, I guess what I was trying to get a little more detail of what I'm hearing on this side is, in other words, whether they want to try to request PDF files to, you know, I'm kind of the old school, I can come in and get them, but for some people, you know, if it's legal or not legal or what, you could have to retract or detract.
Prefer not to have the social security numbers on any issue.
I'll always take an electronic. I'll always prefer an electronic copy.
Right, versus paper. And we'll get a ruling on that before personnel sends anything like that out.
That's why Council McCoy gets the bigger bucks here.
We didn't vote that in either.
We didn't put that line in, item in either.
It was snuck in under free cash.
Anything else on assessor before we move over to treasurer?
Do we have to pay the treasurer?
No, but I did have a question with the treasurer. The temp positions here that are $29,000, is that something new?
That's like we're looking at some reorganization. If there's other steps in front of that, if those other steps take place, we're going to do some reorganization, so it's going to be some switching around. That, you know, it's something that we're hoping is going to happen, so we put it there in place of it and it's going to be, you know, basically pulled from another area.
Could you explain that once again, because I didn't understand any of that.
I'd be happy to explain it again.
We have a position that we didn't have before, temp positions, $29,500. What are they going to do?
Okay, well, if and when that's a possibility, what I'm talking about is we're trying to reorganize some of our offices to reconsolidate in different places. So it would be moving somebody, you know, moving-
Personnel.
Personnel.
Personnel, okay.
Exactly, because it's in the personnel lines.
Yeah.
So it's a salary for a potential move and a restructure in the treasurer's office. So we're looking at, you know, making some consolidations in different parts of the city. And if there's a position that's eliminated elsewhere, we're looking at recreating it here.
Anything else?
Why are we funding a position that doesn't exist? Why not ask for the position's funding in a supplemental?
Because the position does exist in another section of the city.
Oh, I get it.
And it ends up being eliminated in another section of the city. It'll end up being funded in this section of the city.
I think I understand. In a budget, we're not reviewing, I presume.
That's, you're correct.
Yes, yes.
You're correct.
Good. Okay, that answers my question.
Okay, I understand it.
Anything else on treasurer? No office supplies for the treasurer?
Can I ask a question on treasurer? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Trudy.
Oh, it is pretty much level, this year, through supplementals, you spent $27,000 on purchase of services, but that's because-
Excuse me, did you say that sounds sneaky?
Oh, no, 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 I said, I said that's a-
Did you say that about, I mean, were you, did you have a question about something?
No, 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 we were talking about moving from one department to the other.
And you thought that sounded sneaky? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say that's not sneaky. Sorry about that.
No, we were talking about what department that might be.
I was not in front of you.
Dan, you had a question?
Melissa, that you spent $27,000 for purchase of services. You're funded at 22 and you're only going to have 19. So again, we're just thinking that you might need to ask for supplemental, should something come up.
So, so I did like-
You cut a lot of things.
Like, I did like, everybody has, you know, we had increases in salaries. I didn't obviously absorb $29,500, but I tried to take all of my cuts from-
Well, like-
From my supplies to compensate for some of the increases in the salary.
$11,200 that we spent under 53.19. This year, we went to 5200, which was level funded. What was that for, that we spent that money? That must have been a supplemental that we did.
Yeah, it was, that was, that was related to Parsons Street School.
Oh, yeah, okay.
There was a lot of outside professional services for that.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, moving on to computer department. I think there's another position eliminated here, mayor, is that, do I see the part-time, $10,000?
Part-time position was eliminated.
Where are we?
Back on-
I got it, page 12.
Page 12. So the part-time position is eliminated.
We kept it on the schedule in case sometime in the future we could use it, but that's another.
Software license, I assume those are somewhat out of your control. I assume if you keep, I'm sure they have built in their licensing to whatever software we're purchasing, right, so.
I know that part of it was in, some increases in one of the software.
Is this a position that's a layout that we're cutting, or is it just somebody, you're just not filling a position?
It's a person that's in there. You're talking about the position that's eliminated? Yes, the person is, position is terminated as of June 30th and-
So it is a layout?
Yeah.
Okay, in case we're asked. Thank you.
I think it was, was it 10 or 15?
10.
10 hours. It's a 10-hour position, Dan.
Okay. That's too bad.
The software license increase, if I may return to that for a moment? Seems like a pretty huge increase. Was there an explanation from the department as to why?
I'm wondering if that has anything to do with the viewpoint. Because we have more licenses, because the new permitting from viewpoint that we're going to be getting, I wonder if that's under the viewpoint. We have various-
Yeah, we do, and what can I add?
Yeah, we do, and what can I add?
So may not be an increase in the amount for the license, but you're adding more people to the license.
Right. You know, we're...
More people using the license.
City planning, building, fire, board of health, you know, for our new permitting.
That makes sense.
I'm sure Barry had that discussion.
If you add computers, I know this from Smith, if you add computers to the licenses, you have to pay for additional licenses.
For everybody who's utilizing.
Right, so...
Well, for the viewpoint, the new permitting system that we're supposed to be trained on this week, we're licensing, you know, people that weren't on, before all we had was, in the building department was the license there.
So, so the viewpoint permitting, I have an itemized list, but I don't have it compared, the itemized list as of last year, but viewpoint is $11,000.
Right.
So my guess is that...
And the licenses are a fee on top of that.
A fee for, per unit.
Yeah.
And that's his total cost for a viewpoint that he had.
I figured it was viewpoint and new software.
But we had a different software before that, but there were only like one or two users at that point, but this is now the, you know, the whole idea.
Everybody's going to, or not everybody.
Not everybody, but a number.
It's going to be more widespread in the city.
Fire, board of health, planning department, building department, and possibly one other departments before was, the software we had was only in the building inspector's office. This will be great.
Will this streamline the process along, in terms of making it simple?
Absolutely, everybody will sign off on it in an electronic way, you're asking earlier for minutes and things like that, when we get the planning board decisions, they'll be on it, you know, so everybody can view it. Definitely streamlining things.
Okay.
That answers my question, thank you.
Sounds like an increase in transparency, I love it.
Sounds like somebody's calling public works and...
Can you have it, can you get that?
Is that an answering machine over there?
It's an answer.
Yes, it is.
Tax collector.
Yes, we're at...
Whatever we're paying her, it's not enough, we need more taxes. Oh, I'm on TV.
There is a, it's approximately the same like all the others, and there was an increase she asked for, I'm trying to look where I saw a differential.
Hers was all regarding her meter machine, her mailing and her metering.
Postage went up.
Postage metering, new postage machine.
But she was level funded.
You know, leasing versus buying, a lot of discussion about that in her, in her, on her budget.
So she isn't going to get her machine equipment or whatever?
And then when we looked at some of the different things in there, they...
5249.
5274, a rental increase, significant.
Hey, we're going to lease it.
We're going to lease it instead of buying it.
So that's the one ahead of it, the 5249, instead of buying it, we're going to go and rent it?
When you buy it, there's a large maintenance fee on it, so we looked at it and, you know, so we just looked at what Dave have all says to us and Betty.
We leased a major printer at Smith, and it's so much better.
Right.
You buy it, you buy that technology and it changes every five years, so if you want to get a new lease, you don't have to, you just get a new machine, every five years you change your rental rate, but you're always getting new technology, if you buy it, you're stuck with it until you can afford the big expense of buying it.
The one they have now, they're running into a lot of problems and getting the certain parts and this and that and the maintenance, and now they're not, no longer, they've had a maintenance fee on it, no longer, are they going to maintain, you know, what's the company going to maintain it, so, you know, they made a lot of calls and we looked at a lot of the different information, and it just seemed to definitely be worthwhile to try this option.
The way companies are doing it now, leasing is the way to go for these major kinds of machines.
Especially since they, it stops supply, they say, oh, well, that's an old machine.
It's an old machine, right. If you buy it, if you buy it, you're stuck with a machine you might not even get parts for.
Right, well, that's what's happening, Dan, that's exactly what's happening.
Exactly, we're finding that out.
Over to the city attorney, unless there's more questions on the collector of taxes. JP, you got a question?
Oh, okay, the safety department, EDP bond, so this is one of that line, but is it bonding for the office?
Yes.
Yeah, because they handle money.
Same thing with the treasurer's office.
Thank you.
City attorney, the only question I had, and I may have asked this in past years, the periodicals, the 2500, is that, I mean...
He has to keep up with...
That's a flat, the only thing we purchase anymore, those are here, first of all.
These logbooks, the add-ons in the back of the...
Exactly, or once in a while, when they're, when they don't put the fillers in, it's that they'll replace the book, so that's all, we checked around to see what we needed, and at one time, years ago, we had all these different things, we don't need them, but we utilize those all the time, so we keep them up, and that's all that is.
That's all it is, so it's not something like, that the city solicitor is getting periodicals in his office or something?
He doesn't get anything.
I thought I had asked that in the past, that it was...
I don't know if you did, but that's a good question, but he doesn't get anything in his office.
That these are for these books back here, that you get the updates?
So who uses them?
We all do. When you were asking earlier, you know, or we look them up online or whatever, but we have the books, so we will get from the other building.
Because the good part, Joey, while you can read the mass general laws, if you want to see what some of the case law is.
Case law, that's case law, right.
That's, the back shows you a lot of the case law, we're to give you individual cases so you can kind of look and see if there's something parallel.
But you think it's...
It's computerized now, too.
It's a data progressed to a point where you're really wrong.
There might be an electronic version, I know, like in my son's company, they got rid of all their hard law books and everything, it's computerized, but I don't know what the difference is.
Is that, did somebody look into that?
You would need to do like a Westlaw or a Lexis type service.
And you'd have to pay for that service.
Right, absolutely.
But I would have preferred smaller than you said. Is it $2,500 a year or more, that's the question.
And it's by user, too. All the mass general laws are available on DR website for free, but you have to know what you're looking for.
Yeah.
You really, you kind of have to know which section you're in, otherwise you're just, you'll get a list that's...
They have a pretty good search system, but they also, as Dan said, they don't give the...
It doesn't always have the case law in it, so you might have to, I was just wondering if we've ever looked into it, maybe it's something for...
She said if you want Westlaw, you get the case, but you have to pay for it.
Right, you have to pay for case law or Nexus, Lexus.
Yeah, mass general law is free, but the case law...
I know, just enough to make myself pay yours.
So maybe we should look and see how much that is.
I mean, something that obviously you can't do.
Sure, you, I would go right ahead, and, you know, be interested in what, you know, what you find out, but I can tell you that these are used a lot, and even the public will come in sometimes and sit down and look through them.
No, I use them, I'm kind of old school.
The licensing board uses them all the time, I was just going to say, we have a lot of people that don't use computers, on the licensing board, there were two, and they would use them all the time, you know, copy them for different, you know, different public hearings and things like that, so...
You got to wait for the next generation to work through, us old people, well, I'm totally digital now.
That was, that was my only question on the city attorney.
But there's still a lot of people like Dan out there, you know.
That's okay, Dan.
Is this just Jack, city attorney, or is this labor attorney?
This is just Jack.
That's just Jack, okay. With everything that went on, did we, how did we do for 15?
We did well.
Well, I just noticed it was only 9,000 in 214, but we budgeted 25, we expected to have these situations occur. Okay.
That was an unusual, an unusual year, the 9,000, that was an unusual year.
Personnel. Have to cut this.
We have to cut that director's salary, I don't know, what the heck is that?
If anyone could go back, I just had the two, the negotiator and the actuarial studies...
Those were combined from other budgets.
That's what I thought, so these are coming over to...
Right, kind of like what happened in the auditor's office, where we just combined them into personnel.
You know, between Val and Melissa, it's just, it's just, you know, housekeeping, why would we have a separate budget with just one line item in it, when it falls underneath that office anyway, you might as well stick it under the department it belongs in, so when you see an increase, it really isn't.
Right.
Right, so, so, I just have my notes here, so negotiator was in general government, and you can see that there's a zero in there now, and that's the next page, and then the actuarial study came out of a different section of the budget, it came out of department 9400, which we'll get to under employee benefits, so these are just basically contractual services managed by her department, and we felt it was easier to just...
To just put them in there.
Yeah.
Instead of three budgets or three different sections, have it all in the same, all in the personnel budget. Makes sense, especially when you're tracking it.
Is, what is professional services under your, is that labor attorneys and things like that, what is a labor attorney right here?
Right, and so we kept, it's also the 111F, we have a consultant company that actually is a new company now that we just transferred to.
We end our negotiation, we're constantly in a negotiation with the union.
No.
We have nothing to do with it.
And there is one at the next year.
Right, no.
That's why it was 19,000 in 2014, but it went down because we were, good job, good job getting all those contracts.
Yeah, it was really, really amazing.
Well, that's why you stay, you wanted to get a ride home.
Those are the public safety retire, like injuries.
Cars were shot, I'm sorry.
The 111Fs are the public safety injuries, like when someone is injured in line of duty, fire, police.
Correct, and this is a company that does...
That does like it.
They review any questions I have, they give me advice on how to handle it.
So negotiator, that's why that's zeroed out, about that.
Right, exactly.
City clerk. She got a step increase this year or something, no, not, she must be stepped out, right? She's been here.
Yeah, what there is, is different days every year, I think this year there was one extra day than last year, believe it or not.
Plus they get a little call increase, we gave them that, right?
Excuse me?
We got a call increase for most of the...
They didn't get a call.
Pay plan didn't get a call.
No, they did not get a call, unfortunately, no, they did not.
Okay.
Anything else on, oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
No, I was just saying, hoping maybe if we get a good free cash here, we could do that again, you know, but, no, they didn't get a, they didn't get any increase at all.
Anything else on city clerk? Dan, JP?
No, hold on.
No? Election and registration.
We have an election this year, a city election.
That's true.
It's a local election.
There's a local, there's pri, is there pri, no, no primary this year.
We don't have a primary.
Right, because it's...
We never had one, but those other committees do.
Right, because we're not...
Anybody who wants to run, they're running.
There's no, no part, right, no part. Okay, anything else on elections? Conservation commission, I think there's a little bit of a cut here, and if I remember, I had one starred, let's see...
2,000, it's down to 600.
Right, these we went over, these were over with Jessica.
You guys leave it? Suckers.
Purchase of services.
Thank you for coming.
Last year was 1,200, what, that went away? Purchase of services was 1,200, this is on page 23, and there was no request, and no, did that go somewhere else, or they just...
She, um...
Or Jessica just didn't, did you say Jessica was the one that...
Yeah, so, okay, go ahead and set on...
So Jessica, this is one that maybe we should consolidate some departments, Jessica has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100. But it just seemed like a lot to pull into one, especially after we had her do all six of them three times, and so, so that's, I mean, you'll see that a lot of these small committee ones didn't get the funding, and she was doing that to save staff, like everybody's own expenses, these...
Because there are salaries, you see that. I'll leave, I have faith in the planner, that she'll get through it. The planning department itself, for the city planner, salaries...
So you see that that went up a little bit, and so that's why all these others went down.
Her salary's up, Jamie's salary, I take it is the 21.
That's correct.
Can I ask a question?
Those are...
The planner's salary.
Yep.
On the planner's salary, last year was 59,682, there was a request for 64,884, and then a recommend of 62, 969, I thought everyone's steps were, either you're on a step, or you're going to don't get a step, or, how do you request an additional $2,000?
She paid out a different...
Every single one of these employees is paid partially from grants.
Grants.
So what she did is that she changed the period of time in which she was going to be covered from the grant, in order to make the, in order for everyone to get their staff and all of it to work out.
And you, the ones that have, that are paid for grants, every year they usually request that the city pick up part of the grant hours so that they can, you know, but we're just not in a position where we can...
Can do that, right.
Yes, so, you know, that's not, there's not a lot of them, but in the grants department, you'll notice, you know...
Not a full line item out of the city budget per se, it's grants in conjunction with.
Yeah, but we did keep...
That makes sense, it just made no sense for city line items.
Yeah, we did keep her, her hours and her staffs full.
Right.
Good, thank you.
Obviously purchases are, I mean, purchase of services are down, but again, this is, we're hoping a little, I guess, in it. Advertising. City arts.
Now, here's another one, JP, that falls right into what you were just asking.
Yeah. How much of her position is grant funded now?
I believe that this is 25 or 26 hours.
And they would, you know, like to use the, instead of using it toward their, their salary, they would like to use it toward something else that the grant could do, but we need it here, we can't take on these 35-hour positions.
So I believe, I believe she's 25 hours, I think, yeah.
25.
25 is city?
Yes.
And 10 is grant?
Yeah, and this is the only one where obviously there was no place to cut from and not enough of the other departments, so this one is actually a true increase, if you look at the whole group that's managed by the planning department, because, because that person does have a staff.
Right. But for us, we have the additional day, too.
And the additional day.
So there's an additional day this year, so sometimes, some of them you'll notice they look like they increased, it could be just because of the additional day, or it could be just because, it could be the staff, if they, you know, a lot of, there are people that still haven't reached their maximum staff, but that's a perfect example of what you were just asking, JP.
Recycle, we're not using this department, or is this another one where we moved it to the planning department?
No, we moved it to DPW because recycling and hazardous waste is handled out of public works, so there'll be an additional line in that, we created one department for both of those items and put that in section for the public works.
So again, it'll look like their budget went up, but it didn't, it's just consolidating it, taking it out, taking it out of a separate budget and putting it where it belongs, you know, that's who handles it.
Under the authority of...
Exactly, who's, then they're the ones that are, it's their budget anyway, but instead of having it separate, just add it to the budget.
Makes sense.
It does, it really does.
Planning board?
Planning board?
Just minor stuff.
Looks pretty, pretty, pretty much the same.
PBPC, what is that?
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
That's PBPC, we do pay for them?
Does the flood invoice?
An assessment based on population again?
Probably, I can pull a letter out.
This isn't something we would have to fund, is it?
Um, well, I mean, honestly, we-
I'm not saying they don't provide a valuable service, I'm just saying-
We use a great deal in front of them.
And, they do a lot of the grant preparations, and their, and their service, when we use their service, it's free. I mean, I know it's twenty, it's a fee for, you know, an assessment for the year, but they do a lot of, um-
If we dropped out of that assessment, what would happen? We would have a hard time getting grants.
We'd have to pay an hourly wage to them, if we ever needed their help, or if we wanted to do-
They just did their whole mitigation plan.
Yeah, and like, we, we do, they do, like, some of our regional applications, you know, collaboratively with Jessica, and with, and with us, so that, you know, like, if we were gonna, we had a proposal, it didn't work out, but they basically wrote the grant for us to regionalize a conservation agent. Conservation agent, but that, unfortunately, that funding got pulled as part of the governor's cuts.
Right.
But we didn't pay for any of those services, it was just part of this, and we could have received a big grant for that, and they do other things too.
We would have if it wasn't for the deficit in the, in the budget.
So this is fifteen cents per person, and that's how the assessment is reached.
Now, if that grant hadn't come in, would they have gotten additional, any administrative charges off the grant?
They can't, if they were, if the grant was awarded, we were given two options, whether we administered it or they did, and because Jessica felt like she didn't want to administer it the first year, they were gonna write the grant in such a way to allow for administrative services for themselves.
And be paid out of it.
But, the application itself was done also entirely by them, so.
And their administrative fee would have been paid out of the grant?
Exactly.
If it had, if it had gone through.
Well, right, but if it had gone through, and they-
They would have managed it.
They would have managed the, um, you know, the, you know, not, you know, but helped us with the hiring, and then filing for reimbursement, and the reimbursement would have went to them, and they would have paid us, and they would have rented the money, so.
And this was through Southampton also, so they did, you know, we coordinated both ends on meetings, and we had a lot of meetings on it. This would have been, um, really wonderful, but, and it would not have been cut if it wasn't for the huge deficit that the governor had at the end of his term. So, these were the first things that, that hit the road. But you can understand why.
Sony board, anything, again, it looks like it's just- Building operations, I guess my first question would be the building operation regular, there's quite a, from eighty-three thousand down to thirty-seven.
Um, that's another position that I pretty much changed. What I did is, that was a full-time, forty-hour position. It is now, it is now, um, if you're looking at the, at the eighty-
I was looking at the eighty-three.
Right, it was two, it was a forty-hour position, two forty-hour positions, different graded, um, a senior custodian and a custodian, two different grades. The, the regular custodian is, is, is stayed in here at a forty-hour position.
Okay.
The other position is eliminated, and, um-
So the senior custodian's eliminated?
Yes.
Is that a layoff?
And, um, it was, it's, it's, um, a discontinued position, and, and not a layoff, because the person ended up, um, on a, you know, I just worry about HIPAA. You know, uh, retirement, retirement, um, so, uh-
You're not allowed to say that someone is not-
What we've been doing, excuse me?
I'll ask after the meeting.
Okay, what we've been doing for, um, for, for, she's a lot of months, maybe, maybe nine months, we replaced that, we were, we had coverage for that position, a fifteen-hour, a fifteen-hour person. So, um, that's what we've been managing with for all this time, but it was an addition. So now that that position is eliminated, this person will still stay on, so you'll notice that there's a-
So, part-time is the fifteen-hour position?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And it's working wonderful, we've actually been doing it for, it's gotta be at least nine months.
This one, the first position, I feel.
Yeah, so we've been doing it, it's working wonderful.
It's working, we're getting, we're getting the service.
We're getting more service, because someone was out, I understand, okay.
Anything else on, uh, building ops?
Heat and power, increase in natural gas, electricity, that went from four hundred and nine to hundred and nineteen. That's what we're paying, the increase in energy costs, I assume.
Fifty-two eleven.
Yep, one is electricity and one is gas, exactly. You know, the fuel is gas, exactly what we thought, Dan.
Are we in contracts now?
Yes, I aggregated for both of them, um, for electric ag and-
Natural gas?
And, exactly, so, um-
Which companies are doing supplying?
Uh, one is direct energy, and one I believe is Constellation.
Direct energy and Constellation, Constellation does the electricity?
Uh, yes. So, but, you know, we, we surged everywhere.
Do you remember the rates off the top of your-
Uh, one is nine percent, I mean, nine.
Nine cents a kilowatt?
Yeah, which is a lot better than the twenty-five cents it hit last January, so I was in, thankfully, we, we started this last October. So, I can pull off the contract, give you the exact-
Direct energy, for the gas, direct energy?
Yeah.
Well, how, do you remember the rate?
Um, I, I'd be happy to pull it up for third.
I don't, I don't need it the second.
Yeah.
But, uh, do you remember the time, do you remember the time period?
Uh, three years.
Three years?
Yep.
So we locked in to these rates for three years? And what time of the year did they come due, do you remember?
Well, yeah, like I said, we locked in in, no, 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 we locked in in October, fall, yeah.
So, October to October, three years later, okay. Makes budgeting easier.
Anything else?
Jim was a good move, and it ended up being a really good move for us, because everything went just haywire in January, and we were protected, so it ended up being a good move.
Just while we're thinking about heat and power, would the gas company putting on moratoriums for new services, are there any plans for the city for new services? I, I, on the municipal side?
A big problem, JP, we've had several meetings, first off, with, you know, with, with, is that Columbia Gas anymore? We had several meetings with them right at the beginning, first of all, they, they notified us at the beginning, which was pretty scary, that it was gonna happen, and we've had many meetings, we've had meetings that we've brought in our, our representatives, our state reps, our state senator, um, the presidents of the company and business people. Um, it has affected our businesses, and, and one year is, is a long time. We just had another talk about this when George Durante from the Department of Housing and Economic Development was here. Um, I've talked about it with the governor, with the lieutenant governor, and anybody that'll listen, that it's really difficult for us to be competitive, when, you know, our surrounding companies, our surrounding communities are not affected. This, this has affected East Hampton and North Hampton. And the only hope for us this calendar year is that the capacity, we're on the same line as, it goes Westfield, Hoyoke, East Hampton, North Hampton. So we're at capacity, so there will be no new hookups, and, um, so the only, the only shot we have at anything is that Westfield doesn't use their capacity, and Hoyoke doesn't use their capacity, and they, they let the company borrow it, so to speak, so we can have some, and that is not-
For example, if we were building a school, and the school were ready to be hooked up now- Natural gas. Natural gas, we couldn't use natural gas.
Right, well, exactly, unless you had-
Unless you were able to borrow from another community.
Unless you were rebuilding a school that had it, you know, if you were-
Can't it have the same capacity?
Right.
The same, the same amount? Because you can't-
That's right. Well, the same amount for the city, JP.
All the conspiracy to get that pipeline, that's all it is, don't give me, I'm sorry, I don't believe them a second.
The capacity for the city.
Right.
Not for that spot.
Not for that particular spot. I don't believe them, Dan.
You don't believe them?
I don't believe them.
I'd be leery my side, Dan.
So it's a, it's a very big issue.
No, 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 that's okay.
A separate issue.
I know it affects, it affects the average homeowner too, that there's no conversions either.
Right.
You're an oil customer now, or something.
And there's no upgrades, if you have a gas hot water heater, they won't allow you to put in- I mean, electric hot water. No, furnace, if you had, if you had a gas hot water heater, so you have gas service to your house-
That's right.
You're not allowed to-
You still can't put in a whole furnace.
Because your capacity increases. Because your capacity increases if you have your heating unit.
That's absolutely right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, man hand rail trail, looks like it's pretty much the same.
I've jumped to benefits, I don't see anything in it now.
I just, just to clarify that, that the man hand rail trail is, is just a portion of what, most of that is paid to the man hand rail trail committee.
Right, I know that was just a small spike in that data. Well, the new thing behind the mills, is that gonna increase their, not necessarily our cost, I mean, obviously, ours is twenty-five hundred, but I'm not-
The mill owners are-
I know the mill owners are putting some in on that CPA grant, and I didn't know.
They're actually putting some, paying to the man hand rail trail committee to-
To keep, like, the maintenance.
Exactly.
So it's gonna go directed over.
Yeah, goes there.
Benefits, that's five, eight.
Contributory retirement, we spend a lot of money. I don't think we should allow anybody to retire.
That's right.
They have to work until they die.
I agree now, Dan, but just, long as the ones that are retired can stay retired.
You have to come back to work.
Everybody else has to come back to work. Uh, any questions on the, or any comments by the mayor, or the councilors on the-
I have talked so much about retirement this year, that I am sure, I'm keeping my mouth shut. Melissa's very happy with that.
Man, I know we did give the, uh, not that, we allowed the permission for them to give it a, a couple thousand more on their call, remember the percentage on two thousand, but I don't think that affects the actual number, right, because we were locked into this-
The reserve fund.
It just doesn't pay down the liability, or the unfunded liability.
It, it, the number, the percentage changed, but it didn't, what you, what you're thinking about is whether you did it or not, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have changed the number, but the number changed greatly, it was like an eight percent increase.
Because the, when the actual actuary did the study for what we'd have to contribute, they assumed that we would allow the increase, and the, and to move forward, we would have had to pay this, and it would have, but that's why it's high, because it's assuming the, the increase, and if you had not decided to allow that, then we would, you're right, would have paid the same amount, but it would have paid, paid down the liability faster.
Yep.
Right. I remember we discussed that, lengths.
Such a hard thing to understand. Uh, what is WIC?
The reserve fund, is that, um-
Really?
Why, Dan, no, no, I'm talking, I'm still in, um-
Ninety-five-ten.
Ninety-five-ten, it shows like forty-five thousand last year, and two hundred, two hundred thousand this year, and I was wondering what.
Oh, I thought, I, because we go through, we go through each-
That's just our reserve fund.
But each page is detailing, that's why.
Right, so the reason that's jumping is because I asked?
You just want?
Well, because as we've gone through our budgets, you know that we have not sufficiently funded them. And so, if an emergency comes up, and we had put it in fire, but it was needed in police-
This way you could take it out of reserve?
This way we can take it out of reserve, and the more we have a reserve, the less ads we will pay, because reserve doesn't have to be put in the newspaper.
Right.
Whereas appropriation from free cash does.
So, we're trying to, no matter how much we're cutting, you'll notice, we're also trying to stash a way, you know-
Because you know some of these departments are, I mean, we're looking at the-
Yep.
With rose colored glasses, that these expenses are gonna be done, but you know some of, some of them are not gonna, there's gonna be maintenance stuff.
Hard to know where to put each ten thousand dollars, so now, when the emergency comes up, um-
There'll be a pot here in the reserve fund that you could fill the gaps.
And it, and-
I like that system better, actually, because transfer between departments is harder.
Yep.
And I, I like the, putting more in reserve, rather than, if you can, if you can take, if, what you're doing then is taking it from all the departments, some out of each one, and putting it in reserve, so that you have an emergency fund that can go to any department that you might need.
That doesn't need an advertiser.
And you don't have to advertise it, but it, it's a transfer, then you don't have to hit stabilization, or, if you have free cash, if you have it.
Right, right, we're, we're just trying to have a little bit of a cushion, because we know we're not gonna have a free cash year this year, like we did last year, so we know how much we need it, and we also know how tight these are.
Right.
So, instead of, you know, padding them, it's easier to have them be tighter than tight, and then there's money to utilize if needed.
So, the department heads were okay with this, in the sense that they would ask you for reserve monies if they see a need?
The department heads were told to, I, I told each department head that they were to give me a, I called it a zero increase.
Close to a zero.
A zero increase budget, that they were to find a way to live on last year's money.
Right.
And that's what they did.
So this money comes from-
And you'll notice the ones that could not do that.
Whatever revenue you had, that might have been an increase this year in revenue, you put it here, rather than to all the department, in other words, this money had to come from someplace, so it came from-
Well, you'll see that some of the departments had less than, less than zero.
Okay, got it.
Right, a lot of them, you'll see minuses. You know, for good reasons, some, believe it or not, we do have a few costs that actually went down, believe it or not.
Want to talk any more on contributory, contributory retirement, Dan?
No, that's, you, you went through the, the, the-
Right, on the-
The general, and now I was going to the, all right.
Workers' comp?
It's really not that bad, when you think, well, fifteen thousand, it went up, oh, you're going-
Went down.
We're actually down to four or three.
There you go, that's one of the ones we're talking about.
How did you get that down?
There was the mega-
Right, we-
You had a couple of injuries or something?
No, we had allocated in a past year, they had, they had to, Mega came back, we changed companies at one point in time, carriers.
Okay, right, when we, what we did is, we went, we put our, um, our, our workers' comp is now in our Maya program, which has our property liability, but, but after we, after we switched, and, and it was a good thing we switched, because their underwriters, Mega, was that the name of the other one? Mega was the underwriter, was a, was a company we had last time, before, and they went under, and it was lucky that we were able to get into Maya. And, what they did though, after that, which I thought was really nice, is they gave us a three-year assessment to, that was approved by whatever bankruptcy or whatever, so we were paying a three-year, we were paying an assessment on them, even when we weren't using them for three years.
So, so that was the last, that was the third year, so that's gone, and also-
So now we're paying a new rate to the Maya?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Now we're paying a new rate to the Maya?
Well, we've had Maya for three years now, and by combining both of them, we saved a lot of money, but it didn't look it, because we had an assessment-
You still had to pay the assessment.
Yeah, which I, I still don't understand how that ever happened, but it was mandated, and approved.
So that assessment is now gone before they-
Exactly, I mean, they went under, and we were lucky that we had a carrier, that we had our liability, our property liability through Maya, um, and we were lucky that, because we were already a participant, that they took us on, because, um, we would have been stranded on.
IA, Massachusetts into a local insurance agency?
They're excellent.
And they let our rates the same as last year.
I was just gonna say, on top of it, they didn't increase the rates, you know? We were expecting-
We must be a low-risk community for some, that's how they fix rates, right?
No, nothing to do with that.
All right, that's that. Sorry, brought it up.
Yeah, you don't wanna talk about that one either, John, Dan.
Medicare, I guess there's, uh-
Well, we bought all those retirees back.
Not much you can do about Medicare, that's just what you're taking.
That's payroll tax.
That's what I said, that's just coming out of the-
And honestly, um, I don't know, but I level funded it.
Thirty-two B.
Thirty-two B.
Jane's on.
Did we get any increase from, uh, what is the name of the company, I mean, uh?
The trust. The trust?
The trust, yes.
The trust gave us, um, for active, gave a minor increase.
What do you call minor percentage wise?
It was one and a half, I believe it was.
Really, that's all?
Yeah.
How the hell are they affording that? This is health insurance.
Because it's the trust.
And we had a substantial decrease in, um, the retiree, by changing to, in October, we changed to Medex two.
The trust did.
The trust did, excuse me, and-
A very successful transition, by the way, I was very impressed.
It dropped the monthly premium for the retiree share for, by sixty dollars a month. It did, and-
For the retiree, retirees portion, okay.
They're, they're, the portion they-
Correct, and ours-
And ours is the same, because retirees are fifty percent.
And fifty percent.
Right.
So you're saying that the Medicare program took over for the individual, is that what?
We had Medex three, and the Medex two.
Okay, I don't understand the difference.
Well, they went to, they switched to a savings, the trust did, so everybody in the trust, it wasn't a-
It upped the premium co-pay, the prescription co-pays a little bit, but we're finding that it really didn't, with the decrease in the monthly premiums, that the retirees are not seeing that increase.
They're supposed to see, at the end of the year, no matter what they did, a savings, because even though, um, some of the co-pays went up, the maximum co-pay you could pay, there was a limit, so you pay this, and once you do that, you're done. So, um, but they're all supposed to see technically a decrease in their retirees.
Individuals that have multiple prescriptions, I had one in my office recently that had fourteen prescriptions, and she was concerned about it, but we found out that after the first time she renewed, um, she met the maximum for the year, so her prescription co-pays went back down to two dollars and three dollars.
So, so far, it's been very successful.
Well, you went down from four million to thirty-nine sixty, that's a significant decrease, that's nice to see, and we're always worried about healthcare going up, and I see this, and I'm going, okay, I'm not gonna complain.
And the five hundred and thirteen thousand is Dan's non-net, and net school retiree figure.
Oh, where are you?
Fifty-six oh, oh, I'm, I'm just, uh-
Why are you saying that to me?
No, no, I'm just-
But that is the money, is that the, is that the money that would go to that?
That is the, that is the school, health retiree, so yeah.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Five hundred, that's it.
That's why I thought you would be interested in.
Well, now we have an exact figure.
An exact.
Five hundred thousand.
Um, actuarial study.
This is the one that moved to planning.
Oh, okay.
No, it moved to the personnel.
Personnel, sorry.
We're not saving all this much.
Liability, is that Maya?
Yes, we have our property, it's under the, the property and everything is under the, it's under the liability market. That's our, our fleet schedule.
My feet just dunks.
That's our fleet, our corporate, all our insurance.
But we're going to move that budget.
MIAA, A's for liability.
MIAA.
MIAA, yes.
MIAA, insurance is under there.
That's it.
IIA.
Inter-local insurance agency.
MIAA, okay, two I's, not two A's, okay, liability.
And they projected, um, no increase, but I also have in this, my deductibles are in here, you know, any of our lawsuits are in here.
So that isn't just a cost of the insurance?
That's right.
You're, you're budgeting for deductibles if we got into lawsuits.
Exactly, what we have for sore, we have a $2,500 deductible if a sore backup is, you know, the liability affiliate of the city, 10 grand on a lawsuit, so everything is in here.
Right, okay.
Our fleet schedule.
Two hundred thousand in the reserve fund, we like it. I like it. How could there be nothing in 2014? There was no reserve fund?
No, that's not a budget, that's actually spent and nothing is ever really spent out of the.
It's transferred into another.
So the expense is shown where we spent it, not.
Unemployment comp appropriation?
Financial committee reserve fund?
Do we have that one?
What is it?
I was on.
Finance committee reserve.
Finance committee reserve fund.
That would be depending, recording secretary?
We'll change the name.
225,000, Dan, so is that a number?
Hey, that's enough. I could quit my other job.
Do you have a question on that?
No, no.
You just like that, you just like the title.
Have we said that?
Yeah.
So are we done with this budgeting stuff?
Yeah, unless you have a question on unemployment compensation.
Do you want to move these tonight or move them all?
I'm going to move them all, just, yeah, that way if, because we all have another couple of weeks, if there's other questions, we could bring them back up with. I always put down on the agenda that we're going to focus on these sections, but it still leaves open the opportunities if we wanted to go back with a particular question.
Absolutely. So we still have the 34,000.
We do have CPA also, that was the last one on our.
Oh shit.
That's a fairly short one.
I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Delete that.
I was just going to say that, soon say that.
Okay. I didn't say that, the name was JP. I can't spell it right. What section is?
That's nine.
Nine is nine.
Just go to the next, flip to the next section. Just keep flipping.
There, Dan, page 110, I think that's the first page, there may be one above it.
You're too far, go back.
Is it section nine?
Page nine. Those are nine, Dan, the, the little.
Nine of 11.
The little, uh.
Nine of 11.
Nine.
Nine of 11.
2,400 CPA.
Yep, got it.
That's a CPA, is that? Here, right here. Right, right, okay, I think we're on all on the same page.
I, I think we can only, we all need to look at the front page, the rest of it is.
Well, a lot of it is one.
Hey, how long have we been?
Yeah, I was just going to say, no, you only need to look at four pages.
It's taken, it's time for something.
I like the other summaries. That's what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, let's look at the first page, because everything on that is a summary.
This, Melissa, this is, the 60,000s, those are the mandated.
Well, it's the assumption for the 10%.
The mandated, that we have to mandate those particular things, or mandated for a level 10% or whatever it is of the funding.
And I know that you always budget a little higher than you, like, you don't, I mean, that would mean you'd have a total of 600,000, but we don't want to over-budget, so you, I mean, if we get the state match the way we hoped we'll, that, that will be enough to cover it. If we don't, that's why your reserve is sort of smaller.
Because it sounds like the, there's not going to be as much of a match right now, at least, at least the initial thing.
That's what they said last.
But then they did come back with one. They feed it slow.
So we usually get about 600,000 instead? Is that what you were saying?
No.
No, that's a total.
Total.
Total with ours and.
Correct, Melissa?
Yeah.
And my, and my, all right.
In other words, what we get from tax revenue and what the state matches.
State matches, okay. Well, I would say the rest of it is.
I mean, the rest is kind of where it was spent, you know, which is part of being on the CPA, I recognize all these, I know some.
Yeah, these are the actual.
These are the actual spending in what.
Phenomenal.
It's great that we have it, I'll tell you that.
I think so too.
But certainly if anyone has questions, I mean, you could flip through them.
Whoever's idea it was, it was brilliant. Seriously, it was a brilliant idea, brilliant concept, because no way could we fund the projects.
Some of these projects that we would never.
Out of general, no way.
It's just.
We would be shot, we would be hung in effigy.
The negative is more and more cities keep signing on, so therefore the amount the state can dole out gets less and less. Because when it first came out, it was close to.
Yeah, but we take, but, but to see, it's really true, my property taxes are putting into it and that's not going to change.
No, I realize.
So that at least there is a designated fund for these three areas that would not be normally funded, we'd have a hard time.
Because I know the, when they added recreation, that really, these past couple of years, we funded the football, we funded soccer, we funded baseball, right.
They changed the law, allowing for new recreation. Or no, a repair of old recreation, which everybody has. Alright, so, is that it?
Anything else on CPA?
No.
JP, anything?
That we love it.
I'll just go.
And again, if you, if there's something you see and we can bring it up in the next meeting if there is.
I just think, you used to say the money's coming from the state is a little over.
No, but it's coming, it's coming from registry fees. Registry.
Right.
The state is still.
Recording fees.
The state is allocating it to.
No, 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 well, it's coming from, yeah, state, it comes from the DOR.
Somebody asked the DOR, Steve.
But it's coming from the people that are.
Coming from the people who record deeds and mortgages.
That's how they fund.
And fees, and then that money from, goes from their county registry to the.
You don't think they're taking any of that registered, that money, putting in another budget?
Right. Have some more money.
Are they sneaking some of that money out of that budget into something else, maybe? Which is why our match is not a time.
It's coming from, it's another revenue source coming from individuals who transfer property.
For refinancing.
For refinancing.
Yes, which I'm doing right now, so I'm contributing to the CPA.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we've completed those sections of budget.
No, the budgets, but before you adjourn.
We're not, we're not adjourned, we've got one more appropriation, if I can find.
Is that what you were worried about?
No.
We have the enterprise retained earnings request for $34,000 for.
Overtime cost of DPW.
Overtime cost of DPW, I think, um, this was, and I know this for a fact, that this was, a lot of, some of the water services were freezing off over the winter and.
Because of the extreme frost, it went, it went below six feet.
Right. My son, who lives at Southampton, his actually froze and they said how in Southampton, how, how low, how cold by the road, because he's not always there, so like the use. But while they were there, they did mention they were late coming one day because they had to lend East Hampton a hand, and one they started one and the machine broke, and so Southampton lent them. So I know East Hampton, every, every community was having.
Oh, yeah.
Water services.
Springfield, Hoyoke, you saw it everywhere.
Chicopee, everywhere you saw it.
Yeah, exactly, Chicopee.
There was one in Westfield, they couldn't free for like two weeks, I, they were on the news and some.
It was just the extreme cold and, and it's funny because it doesn't, the frost doesn't usually make it down below six feet, and that's what did it.
And talk to the guys at Southampton, the water, like, some of the people that are back way off the road, it freezes generally by the road because there's no snow. If there's snow on the lawn, it doesn't freeze there, it freezes, this is the water service, Dan, into your house.
I know, but, okay.
It freezes by the road and then other people that have lived way back, it goes under their driveway, part of their driveway, it could freeze at the road and then freeze at the driveway again. And, you know, then they got two, they got to free it from this house to that.
Somehow I lost this appropriation.
So anyway, I have no problem with this unless there's other questions on.
I, I didn't write anything down. What do we need it for?
Do you want to look at mine?
No, but what do we have, just tell me what we need it for?
It was 34,000. It was broken up in sewer overtime, wastewater treatment plant overtime and water overtime.
Overtime requirements and DPW.
Exactly, due to the severity of.
Of the winter, a lot of.
To winter severity, that's all I need, okay.
House services were freezing up.
I move that we accept it.
JP's reading it, so we'll give him a second, in a second.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion of second for the 34,000 even, I guess, to those various sewer overtime, wastewater overtime, water overtime, any further discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, you have something else you want to talk to?
I do, I, I really may bring this up, I'm, I'm at your, hoping that I can venge and plead for your assistance. But I have in front of me, um, five, um, transfer requests from enterprise. Um, there, as you know, we didn't do, um, we didn't do a lot of capital this year. A lot of that was because we weren't doing, we were honestly thinking that with the, with the governor's budget coming in with a deficit, we were thinking we were going to get hit mid, midstream, you know, with a, with a, um, a decrease, which would have really blown us out of the water. So we were, you know, we're very cautious anyway, but we were more cautious than normal. So you'll notice a lot of capital things didn't come your way. But we have over 975,000 in retained earnings and they need, they need, they have five requests that they provided to me. And, and right after, you know, as soon as we finished with, hoping that we weren't going to get included, one budget, we got, you know, swamped with our, with our existing budget, getting our budget done. So I, I have copies of these, they're going to be in your, you know, on your city council packet. I feel terrible doing this to you at this late date, um, but I can tell you that the DPW would greatly appreciate it if you could act on them. If you cannot act on them, what would have to happen?
Why couldn't we act on them?
Well, because you have, it's a short time.
I think it's just a matter of.
Well, you would have.
We're going to have about, between the budget on the six.